The Grand Port City Commission meeting to quarter 2025.
Chair, I'd like to adjust the agenda. If I could please add a ground round. Friday.
Is this business after hours?
Oh, that is Thursday. There's two things going on. That and we could put it. Right up consent and that would be item five D possible. Five C.
It's all right. So we're putting this in like this?
No, just add it to.
We'll just do reports. His motion I would second now. Any other discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Let's pretend that Phil's employee status. Chair. If you call those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, round round.
Good afternoon. We're asked by Scott Meyer at Grand Sky to provide our services for business after hours for the chambers event. First, they move approval.
Second.
Sounds great. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, citizen comments, is there anybody here that would like to address the board for things? Since Mom said I always get this wrong, is it items that are not? Either, okay. You had your hand raised, okay. If you, this is the time that you can come up and state your name as the podium.
Question. Don't we usually, don't we find out what item they want to address first and then wait till then?
Either or.
Yeah, he might want to wish as a high.
Do you have an agenda item?
Yes.
Okay, we'll just wait for the agenda, anybody without agenda item, I would like to address. Great, okay, moving on. Grand Forks Young Professional Group.
Frank Commissioner, thank you all so much for having us today. My name is Matthew Turnus. I am the board member on the Greater Grand Forks Young Professionals Organization. The county is a corporate sponsor of our work, so we try to once a year just stop in and say hello and update you all on things that we're doing thanks to the sponsorship. So it's been a really big year for the Greater Grand Forks Young Professionals. We brought in a new full-time executive director, God Carlson, who is seated behind us here. In addition to a couple of other of our newer board members, Christie Coleman, one of our member-at-larges, and Caleb Iles, who is our professional development chair. And we've got a board of fourteen, all volunteer folks with the addition of our paid staff, God Carlson, our executive director. We are a working board, each of our board members is constantly pursuing new initiatives and new projects to help work to bring in, recruit, and retain young professionals here in our community. The vast census has reported that Grand Forks is outpacing other areas in our nation and big area of young professionals here in our community. That's a lot thanks to the support of folks like the county bureau. We offer a lot of different offerings for our corporate sponsors and our members from professional development events such as training new employees, new workloads, deals, all the way to first-time homebuyers courses. We try to offer a wider range of professional and personal life offerings to help people dig their roots deep here in Grand Forks and the Greater Grand Forks. We have community involvement, which is more of a volunteer aspect of our organization, connecting people with area nonprofits, other organizations that could use extra hands, extra assistance, that takes the shape of helping organize volunteers for the downtown development associations, downtown street fair, all the way to going to circle friends or journey home, helping out with walking dogs and assisting there. Then we have our social events committee, which organizes events to network folks together to help create lasting connection amongst our area young professionals and our business community. We recognize as an organization that maintaining young professionals starts with creating those networks, right? Starts with building friendships via our, in an organization that is focused on connecting people and connecting people to their community. One of the big things that we really advanced this last year was our community mentorship program, which was connecting what all seasons, seasons professionals with young professionals. And not only focusing on workplace advancement, but what are other personal goals that you can pursue, right? How can we dig your roots deep here in Grand Forks so that way, you know, maybe you have just graduated college, but how can we start thinking about that next job here in the community or in the area? How can we start thinking about purchasing that house, you know, building that family, building that life here in our community? We've got a really great team behind it. We're able to connect with over three hundred different registered members, a bunch of corporate sponsors and their employers, excuse me, their employees, and we're able to really just be a value add for the community, and that's something that we can't do without your help. So again, this was purely just a, an update and thank you for your continued support and hope that we can continue to collaborate in training and recruiting area young professionals in this community. If there are any questions, of course, I'm more than willing and happy to answer, but again, really just wanted to update you all and again, say thank you for your continuous support.
I think a question.
Yes.
In your conversations with the folks in your organization, what are some of the roadblocks that young people have for staying in the community?
Really good question. One of the biggest things that we hear, and it's more a, a comment on the, the perception of our community, it's that there's nothing to do in Grand Forks. That, as someone who works, my day job is in event marketing, that grinds my gears, right? There is something to do here each and every day, whether it is directly in Grand Forks or throughout the county, throughout the region, there's something going on here. So it's connecting those people with that information, and that's where our community mentorship program has really helped open some folks' eyes into what Grand Forks and what Greater Grand Forks has to offer. We have folks who have admitted that they were planning on leaving Grand Forks after college or after no certain timeframe. Who have continued on here in our community, have gotten grants, have gotten promotions, all because a mentor or another individual in our community has shown them that there really is a busy and vibrant community here.
Sure. Question on invitations to participate. I know we have a lot of young military individuals that get transferred up to the Grand Forks Air Force Base. They have no family here, they're all of a sudden welcomed to North Dakota. Particularly if they come in the winter, sometimes that's a concern if they're coming from a warmer climate. How do you reach out to those young military individuals that are just moving into the Grand Forks area and may not be very familiar with what's going on?
Absolutely. Great question. We have worked really hard over the last couple of years to strengthen our relationship with the Grand Forks Air Force Base. So much that we have an ex officio spot on our board dedicated to having a member of the Air Force Base community serve and sit on our board, be engaged in those conversations, help guide us on ways that, you know, how can we invite the Air Force Base to our happenings? But also, how can we get involved out there? And because of those relationships, we've not only been able to see an increase in, in Air Force members and their families and their friends in our events, but we've been out at their community celebrations, at their local concerts that they're having, we've been a part of their volleyball tournaments. And so it's been really fun, whereas I think past boards of young professionals have been so focused on how do we get them here? How can we meet them with their attitude? We've seen a lot of success.
It's so very important because I can't imagine being eighteen, nineteen years old, coming here from somewhere else, you have no family, no contact, nothing. And all of a sudden, you know, you're in the military and you may be living on base and thinking, what am I gonna do? What, what can I do? And unfortunately, sometimes that creates some mental health issues and sometimes it could create some suicide.
Absolutely. Now finding your, those people that you can turn to, finding those people that you can connect with to make this that well-kept space, that's what we want.
Thank you.
Sam Crowe Snick, I live in Grand Forks, where I also operate Albatross and Gulf Golf Book. I'm here to talk about the Northridge taxes certification, as well as the overall current landscape regarding the tax incentives and specifically pilots, for anyone expanding businesses. I appreciate your time today and thanks a lot for putting me out on the agenda so I can get my points across. Try to keep it as brief as I can, talk for hours, but I'll keep it tight if I can. I was very clear last time that this Northridge pilot program is a violation of the North Dakota Century Code forty dash fifty seven point one. As it provides for unfair competition with existing businesses, those would include other rental property owners, it would include other gym and fitness business owners, and it can include me and my livelihood if any, for the golf simulator as an amenity. Yes, as we discussed, one simulator has a major impact on my business, even if that simulator is only for apartment reference guests. Northridge built a district, a Facebook post for the district reads, quote, amenities include a state-of-the-art gym that will make you a city gym membership, end quote. They also built the Bowin, Bowin has a golf simulator, has a significant impact on my business. Pray for Northridge for the district, for the Bowin and a free market. I one hundred percent, like I said on board, have been being able to do that. But I'm not supportive of this proposed project or the multiple other developments proposed to be coming to you next for a commercial. With this one and those provided for unfair tax incentivized competition, no existing business should have to beat to their substantial detriment against their tax dollars, and our twenty century code is already telling us that. Century Code forty fifty seven point one states, quote, "An unfair advantage shall not be given to newer expanded enterprises, which is the substantial detriment of other existing enterprises," end quote. This includes all taxes and incentives, including pilot programs. Under this chapter of North Dakota Century Code, this should be at the forefront of a discussion, as it is yet to be addressed in a satisfactory manner by the city. They talked about the public hearing, so next Monday has the opportunity for competitors like myself to speak up. But why couldn't we take care of this much sooner? Why are we wasting everybody's time and money? Mr. Peeland and Mr. Bojinski have been aggressively pushing the need for housing and these associated tax incentives. They both have publicly stated their vacancy rate has been at a below two percent. We talked about this last time and I encourage you guys to ask questions, as I have been for a couple of months. Last week for Mr. Peeland, I received the data where this was coming from. He provided me a twenty-eight page consultant memo. This memo was addressed to Northridge, paid for by Northridge, a memo that was for analysis of a new apartment complex for them. This memo shows a vacancy rate of one point three percent, based upon a market snapshot of eight hundred seventy-six units from eight complexes. These include some of Northridge's, some of their commercials, and a couple of other large companies. The city and EDC have claimed to have been using their Greater Grand Forks Apartment Association for their rental housing vacancy data, as seen online via their housing database. The association data shows in quarter one twenty-four, based about, upon, on eight thousand full units, that vacancy rate was in five seven five. Q four of this last year, based on seven eight hundred units, the vacancy rate was up to six point five five. Q one of this year, the vacancy rate dropped to three point six, with only sixty-five hundred units full. This would include about eight hundred to a thousand airmen that are here temporarily through the V one program. Were leaving us in November. So instead of using all this data, not perfect data, but the best, most objective data we've got. That we've had, the data we had planned to be using, they instead decided to use a developer provided, paid-for memo showing a much lower vacancy rate, based on eight hundred and seventy-six units, rather than sixty-five hundred to eight thousand units, all in an attempt to sell their housing shortage narrative to you all, the school board, the city council, and to all of us in the public. Mr. Peeland and Mr. Bojinski have lost my trust, at least for now. I encourage everyone to insist on objective R data when presented with any further sales pitches or presentation plan. On top of that, Mr. Peeland said they also discussed with three local and significant apartment owners and managers. And they provided a vacancy rate, range of near zero to two to three percent. I asked who those owners and managers were, and they told me they're Dakota Commercial, Oxford Northridge, and I am a Co. Commercial being one that hasn't been given and now is applied for the majority of these proposed incentives. Northridge is the one in question now, and Oxford who works with Northridge. We've been in a healthy vacancy rate for years now, for the association surveys. Also, keep in mind, the association data is only compiled from the portion of members within the association choose to report their data. Many rental property owners in town are not even members of the association as they don't see the value of membership. This would include many small operators, so they're the ones who most likely have higher vacancies. And would be those who would be impacted greatly by these incentivized developments. So really, the actual vacancy rate in town currently is probably even higher. But again, this is the reporting mechanism currently available, and it is what is utilized by the city of Grand Forks and Economic Development Corporation. Let's talk about units and the saturation level we're looking at with all these complexes. Northridge is looking at a hundred and fifty-five units, the domain is looking at a hundred and fifty-three, CK Commercial is looking at forty-five, Ray Richards maybe three hundred if that goes through, Furco is another three fifty. The one just discussed on Monday is Thirty-Ninth Avenue South by Furniture Row, it's about a hundred and sixty-five. So through these incentivized projects, they're talking about eleven hundred units approximately, all looking for tax incentives. How many people have truly come here and how many units does our city, our county need? Keep in mind, per census data, our population in Grand Forks, of course, hasn't even grown seven hundred in the last four years. But they keep saying we need to add two hundred and fifty units per year to keep up. Why? Where are the people coming from? They talk about new multifamily permits pulled in the last two years, an anecdotal claim by the city for a need for these tax incentivized apartment complexes. This lack of permitting quite simply could be attributed to a lack of demand and therefore a lack of investor interest. It doesn't mean we have a shortage of rental properties, as pointed out via our actual vacancy rate trends. Also, phase two of Memorial Village will be done next month, that opens up a hundred and seventy-two more units. Vacancy then jumps up too, not because theirs won't fill, but people will relocate. Probably some Bob Cowger's tenants on the north then leave them and go to Memorial Village. If the entire apartment aspect is going to be overlooked as unfair competition, because of a faulty sole need for housing, Albatross and the other impacted retail business, the other providers amenities, still need to be considered. The do not compete aspect needs to then be contractually included in these tax incentive agreements. Don't let say leadership and staff money the waters by questioning what competition is. I'm telling you that one golf simulator in the apartment complex, for its tenants and guests, is detrimental competition for my livelihood. Don't let our mayor question whether a washer and dryer in the apartment means the same thing. Having clean underwear accessible in your home is not the same thing as having a golf simulator or other discretionary amenity in your home. Even if the city wants to pursue a property tax incentive via another chapter of North Dakota Century Code forty fifty eight for urban renewal law. So this would be for slow and light scenarios. It still states that it can't provide unfair competition. The last one to go through for this, I believe, was University Flats, right next to the warehouse apartments. I've been Mr. Cowger and many other rental property owners wouldn't have an issue with that. Reviving a depressed area of town provided for affordable units to lower income, the middle income residents, basic essential state housing. But again, these weren't qualified, even the thirty-nine thousand or so proposal of this urban renewal law. A few areas that continue to be topics of presentation for these incentives, Baker Tilly and the Buck Four analysis. They're a third-party accounting firm, they're not a housing expert, they're not an economics expert. They're simply taking the developer-provided projections and then telling the city the project is unbankable, it's not a good investment. It's not telling you or us, we need this project, it's telling you and us, the developer needs the tax incentive to make the amount of money they want to make. I'd also like to point out, our city has used the same analysts from Baker Tilly for all these projects since twenty eighteen. That seems to take away from the unbiased third-party analysis, it seems, as though the intent would be in hiring a third-party firm like Baker Tilly. There'd be some benefit as far as saving some time and some taxpayer money, but it doesn't really give the objective overall picture. Same projects that were analyzed by this analyst would be Memorial Village, all of them, pure development, Franklin and Thorpe. All projects that traditionally wouldn't be qualified for these pilot programs. Also, how do we change from the ninety, eighty, sixty tiered approach for the pilot, just this last week from the original one hundred eighty-six that Michaela at Baker Tilly said was recommended to ensure the project was successful? So we're being told the Buck Four analysis is negotiable? I'm all for negotiations and traditional, traditional business discussions. But how are we negotiating these pilot terms after the ordered and paid-for analysis already showed us it's unbankable of excess incentive? That certainly degrades the credibility or even necessity of this third-party Baker Tilly analysis. Filtering is discussed. The city hired, and I assume use our tax dollars to pay for Praxis Strategy, to provide for a memo and support of their call for housing. Says all housing is good housing, adding more supply will increase the vacancy rate, thus force all partner rates to be lowered. So their argument is also direct support for the fact the city should not be manipulating the market and negatively impacting current rental properties. It's an explanation that allows fine demand economics work. Yes, price has to come down if supply has increased and vacancy rise. Also, I question the analysis for this memo based upon Zillow rent data. They say it's the best available, but why aren't they using the best data available then for vacancy rate discussion? Why does it seem like everything is cherry-thick to suit the housing shortage narrative? Or is it an affordability narrative? What is it? I encourage that to be figured out real soon. Is it a shortage? Then prove it with actual transparent and objective data, not small snapshots in your favor. And non-anecdotal conversations or examples. If it's an affordability concern, then let's talk more about that without using a shortage as the reasoning for the affordability concern. There can be other market conditions at play beyond the housing shortage that would lend to a perceived affordability concern in housing. In the updated letter I saw of the school board for last night, so assuming that you guys got it. Praxis in the city are trying to get out in front of these comments and questions. Another example of selected data being used for Praxis sites, the quarter one vacancy, from the association at three point five versus what I shared at three point six. So they factor out these Grand Forks apartment units, which in quarter one had a high vacancy. If you do the same thing in quarter four, my stated vacancy of six point five five actually goes up to almost six point eight. So if you want to eliminate these, these side units, then we're actually almost at seven percent at the end of the year for vacancies. That seems to be just about the best snapshot of vacancy that we have right now. That would have been before all the airmen were here temporarily for the V one program. But it would also include the U N D students that are here or were here during this past school year with our record enrollment. If we're going to talk affordability and we look at the request for housing from Grand Forks Air Force Base and U N D, airmen and U N D students, for the most part, aren't going to be able to afford these high-end units, maybe some, but not many. Alter's letter of support for housing, they say they added thirty-four new providers in twenty-four, seventy percent relocated here, so not even twenty-four new residents or families in Grand Forks. Where's the job growth? The population growth? Aggressive coming might be the first primary sector addition to our community, a major addition to our community in the last twenty years, which is awesome. Grand Sky has added about two hundred high-paying jobs, that's also great. The recent serious tax incentive that was approved is going to add whopping five jobs. Do we have hard numbers on what permanent expansion and personnel is coming to the Grand Forks Air Force Base or coming to Alter? U N D enrollment is almost back to an all-time high, it's simply back to the numbers we had in twenty twelve and twenty thirteen. What is not discussed is how much of that now is remote post-COVID. The fifteen thousand students back in twenty twelve would have almost been entirely on campus. But now probably five thousand of those students are fully remote, so not residing in Grand Forks. Major emphasis is around the growing the tax base, now get that, higher property values in total, higher property taxes, if they're paying the full rates. But introduce more dense apartment complexes, single-family property values surrounding these complexes can decline, tax base can decline. So how much net do you really benefit for the city and for the town? Not as lucrative as it's presented. Also, assuming the developer remains solvent, taxes are payable after the exemption drives up. And it's not just revenues as far as the new tax coming in and the, and after the pilots, there are expenses. Yes, less than normal with these infill developments, but there still are expenses. New people in an area does put a strain on police, fire, roads, schools, etc., etc. A good point was made last night to the school board. These complexes will bring in new students most likely, new students do equate to new expenses. It said that projects are likely not to be built in Grand Forks without these tax incentives. I don't think we know that, we haven't tested that. I wouldn't be building without a tax incentive right now if I was John either. They've already gotten incentives a few years ago, so they'd be foolish not to ask and wait for the handout. I'm not against development, against growth, just like I'm not against competition. Good for John if he makes millions and retires young, but it should be a fair playing field for all without these incentives. It was asked last night by a school board member, the comments we made in relation to these being a violation of North Dakota Century Code, per the competition piece were accurate. Mr. Goussen, only in answer to the legality of pilots to a quote-unquote project. He was referring to the city's ability to fly a pilot to an apartment complex or any revenue. He was referring to the city's ability to apply a pilot to an apartment complex or any revenue-producing enterprise. He did not address the competitive piece and the legality of that. And that is because it's very clear in North Dakota Century Code that the competition piece applies to the entire chapter in question. I'd like to leave you with some data and questions, though, in relation to the pilot application and its intent in general. As I feel your entity has fiduciary responsibility to your constituents, the big end of this matter, just as the city should be further than they have. I know Mr. Galston has done some extensive research and he's come through his own legal opinion. I also researched the implementation of the pilot program. It came about via nineteen ninety-four special legislative session. Prior to that, the primary sector received five years exemptions and A commodities could qualify for ten years of an exemption. Primary sector does not include apartment complexes, indoor golf facilities, Starbucks. It includes a Gristle, Simplot, Sears L M. Sears could get a five-year exemption, a Gristle could get the ten-year exemption. If you're in a population under forty thousand, then an exception could be made for retail. So we're going to need a primary sector qualifier. We're not under forty K, so we went qualify. I read the eighty-three-page document from ninety-four legislative special session. That's pretty interesting, my family moved to Wapton in ninety-five right after this happened. This session was called so that Wapton could entice a wet corn mill plant to locate there versus South Dakota. Mr. Galston has handpicked the verbiage from the eighty-three pages. Words that show along with how the chapter of Indy Century Code senses written to justify the pilot program's ability to be applied to any quote-unquote project. And project being defined as any revenue-producing enterprise, so apartment or other retail. There are multiple other quotes in supporting documents in the eighty-three-page document that support a different interpretation of the intent of the special sessions of work for the pilot program. I believe intent is a main consideration in contract law. I'm not an attorney, I'm not an expert, but I'm sure we have some in our great state who could weigh in. I have quotes I can share with you that lead me to believe the pilot program was still intended to apply only to primary sector and A commodity projects, not just any revenue-producing enterprise. The intent was for an A commodity business to locate the Wapton in North Dakota. Also, rather than a pilot allowing for free rein during a period of twenty years, up to three years. The intent as outlined in the legislative special session seems to provide the pilot program as a means for a municipality or an operator to spread out their tax payments over a period of time. So taking their five or ten-year exemption for making payments then nearly over a period of up to twenty years. These two observations are just my interpretation, my legal opinion, but I encourage your body to request your own legal opinion. Just think of it this way. If a pilot program truly gives a municipality the ability to provide any revenue-producing enterprise up to twenty years of payments that can equal zero dollars. Why was all the verbiage left in North Dakota Century Code chapter regarding the five-year exemption for primary sector and the ten-year exemption for A commodities? Why the forty thousand population stipulation for a retail exception? Why would this still be in the active Century Code chapter if it's essentially useless? If the pilot program is how Mr. Galston and our city interprets it, twenty years for any level and anything revenue-producing. Why is our Century Code written as such? It just doesn't make sense to me, so I obviously have the question. None of that should matter right now, but I think it's very important. My primary concern, well, I'll leave you with this. I and all other existing businesses in the community of Grand Forks or Grand Forks County should have to compete to its detriment with a tax incentivized newer expanding business. Again, for North Dakota Century Code forty fifty-seven point one, where all these tax incentives are derived. Quote, "Tax exemptions authorized by this chapter shall be granted, shall give due weight to their impact and effect on existing industry and business to the end that an unfair advantage shall not be given to newer extended enterprises," which is the substantial detriment of existing enterprise. And quote. Thank you very much for your time and your consideration. I can stand for any questions, or I can also engage during the discussion appropriate.
I'll go to one quarter graph that agenda item. You guys want to start from the top to the podium? Please address your favorite name. Okay, good afternoon, my name is Mona Lee, I live at thirty-two thirty-one Ward Circle. I have to follow that. Okay, I'm here to make four quick points. Last night, we were all at the school board, as some of you probably know. And at that time, I said I was absolutely, absolutely opposed to giving a tax pilot to the developers. And I also said I'm absolutely opposed to giving any tax pilots to apartment developers. I'm not against these people at all. I just don't believe that we as taxpayers in Grand Forks County should be subsidizing these businesses. And that's what we're doing, if you approve this tonight. Number two, common sense tells you that they are in direct competition. They're in competition with all other apartment owners in this community. And if you can go extend that to smaller towns also. It's an unfair advantage. You're basically picking winners and losers. I say, let's have the free market work. We have good people in this community, they can build, and they will, they'll come forward. There are at least three more proposals, and we heard of a couple more last night. Developments that are coming under bank, pipe, the pipe. And I say, where does it stop? Are we going to give pilots to everybody as long as they they come to the mayor and ask? I'm totally against this, and I know Mr. Phelan will say, and who's here, that we've done it in the past. I know Franklin and Ford was a pilot. Both of Memorial Village one and two were pilots. I didn't agree with those. They were competition. Number three. Speaking about the lack of policy, I think Andrew just painted you a pretty good picture. The city has never come with a document that shows you they have surveyed all apartment owners. They have not given you the percentage of apartment owners that have responded. So we do not have a clear picture. And you can have a clear picture when you draw this and this and this, has to be all the apartment owners, to be fair. Okay, number four, finally. I believe, I do believe you're in violation of the Century Code if you approve this tonight. And I learned that through Andrew, and he's the owner of Albatross, there's other businesses that are affected. But he did a ton of digging and research, and a lot of us really appreciate that. And I think we all should, your board should too, as a, bringing forth all of this information as a citizen. Can't even talk, okay. So right now, what I'm asking you is to think of your neighbors. Think of everybody out there in the county. That are paying plenty of taxes right now. And I ask you to both know. Thank you.
Hello again, I'm back for, from Alaska. I'm talking strictly about the Northridge project. It's, my opinion is the city, the county, and the school district have absolutely no business taking taxpayer money and giving it to credit. I've heard of it. I know they do it elsewhere, but you know what, I know these guys, they're nice guys, but I don't like them that much, so I want to give my money. Be quite honest. You know, it's, what, I don't even understand the concept that we should give Northridge Construction six point seven million dollars to build a project? Would I like to have that? Oh, hell yeah, I think they're putting this entire rule above that. You know, somebody's coming to my aid to help me build the units, two hundred forty thousand dollar units. Luxury high-end units. These are not, you know, your entry-level unit. But you're, the city is coming to us and selling us, we need to do that. Right, our vacancy rate is at two percent. Whereas Mr. Phelan said last night that the school district, one, three, or two percent, we could argue about vacancy all day long. But what I have a problem with is they don't have any accurate. The most accurate numbers you're going to get are from the Greater Grand Forks Apartment Association as they track everything. But it still doesn't include all the private owners that are out there. Not everybody belongs to the apartment association. So I don't know where you get two percent, because as Anderson, it hovering around six. Ours personally are at five forty-five. Which is a long ride from two percent. So I really don't understand where that comes from, I've looked all over. And there's no two percent number out there. So I would like that proved out. You know, you can show us what it is, but taking a sampling of eight hundred fifty units and using that, you could use that sampling from your best units, right? Your best building, let's just go count up the best building we got. Put their vacancy rate at two percent, we're done. And Northridge paid for that, and then they submit that to the city. Does that sound correct? I mean, you got the apartment association telling you if you're at BUP or six percent, we're at five forty-five percent. And all of a sudden, the city says two percent, I don't even understand what that is, we've been doing this for twenty-eight years. We didn't just figure. So I don't understand where that number comes from, and if you have to look for it anywhere, even on the city site. Nor would it be found. So I have a very big issue with that, because the whole TIP program that they're proposing is hinged on two percent or very low vacancy. So we're at five and a half or six. That's not low, and that's been the average for years. It has, it doesn't really change. Buildings get built, supply and demand has worked well for a hundred years here. We don't need to give anybody any money. I don't think that the county can afford to give anybody any money. I, I just find it ridiculous. The vacancy rate for TIP money, you know, there's what, four or five other projects coming down the road here? Of applications for the same stuff. It's going to be about forty-two million dollars. That's my thought. I don't know, I'm sure Mr. Phelan or the mayor can tell us where, that's the area. Are we going to, every time we exempt somebody, then we better make up that money somewhere, right? I mean, we have additional costs with taking care of those products or areas. How do we pay for that if we exempt them? Taxpayer, right? I mean, where else are you going to get the money? And if you look at that sheet, it was brought up last night at the school district meeting, if you look at the estimates. For just Northridge project, the management fee on there is twenty-five percent. I mean, the average management fee that we see is five and a half to eight. So there gets two hundred percent more for management fees or a better way, twice. Right, plus on top of that, they have an eleven percent maintenance fee. So, that's thirty-six percent. Pretty funny. Anyway, my whole point is you do not it's ridiculous. Supply and demand. If we need apartments, the apartments will tell you to come in and build it, doesn't matter who it is. But nothing against the developers, I like them all. But as I said before, I don't like them that much that I want to put my money in their pocket. And I don't think anybody else in the county cares to either. There's seventy-two, according to the twenty twenty-two census, there's just over seventy-two thousand people in the county. So we're going to give two thou- or ten thousands of the population all the benefits, and the rest of it will have to be paid for by the other ninety-nine percent of the taxpayer. That doesn't seem correct. Does it? I'm just, I don't know if I'll get the answer, I'm worried, but it sure doesn't seem that. But I still don't understand how the county, I mean, the city has taken money from any county where there's one, and the school district. So you're going to spend taxpayer money on this? This is the first one. Everybody's getting one, there's four more in the line already. Why don't you just end it and both know? And let supply and demand take care of it? It's worked for many, many years. There's no reason to give away that kind of money, ever. Especially to private developers. That's the biggest problem. It's not a greater good deal, it's not, these are not entry-level apartments. They're very high-end luxury units. Some cool pickleball courts, dog parks. I would wish that you would both know, and this wants to fall. Because otherwise, you're going to be dealing with this every
for the numbers about everything else. But who can let you from an ex-first responder standpoint? I mean, more air stations that we've built, I mean, more substations for law enforcement ability. K nine, back in my day, it's about twenty thousand dollars. I'm hearing now K nine is more like sixty to seventy thousand dollars a year. That's a very expensive dog. Sheriff's Office has one hour and a hundred and three spark fires. But if we're looking at tax incentives and we're looking at building more buildings, now we're going to need more fire stations, we're going to need more tower units. You're going to need more roof ladder units because they're going to get taller. We can't fight them from ground level, we have to get up to where the fire is, if the fire is on the fifth floor, how are we going to get there? So when you look at a standpoint of things like this, you have to look at what is going on with law enforcement, what's going on with department, what's going on with our EMS system? We don't have the EMS that we used to have today. More and more people are not volunteering to get into EMS. You don't see a whole lot of paramedics standing in line waiting for their next course. Or young guys going for the next EMT course trying to become paramedics. You don't see a lot of people wanting to become firefighter ones and firefighter twos. You don't see a lot of people wanting to become hazardous materials technicians. I did help. It's not hard, it's not easy, it's not fun. But knowing that you save somebody's life is where we stand. And when you start adding more and more buildings, but you're not adding more and more resources. Bring lives at risk. So I want you to consider that when you're thinking about things like this, because with the taxes in them. There's not extra taxes coming in for more resources that are probably going to be needed along the way. And Altr building a new building, great, but I haven't been wanting to listen to yet. And more medics to be equipped. They're still running the same crews. Got one helicopter. And this is things that we have to think about when we're talking about adding more and more things, because we're not adding like their extra resources that are going to be there to help people in need. When you call one nine one one, you want that person to show up. What if they're somewhere else in the county, or if they're somewhere else in the city, they can't get to you because? What if they're somewhere else in the county or if they're somewhere else in the city, they can't get to you because. Their jam governor's not enough officers or EMS can't reach you. So, or you know, when you're looking at things like Texas, those are the things you need to think about.
Sir, are you a firefighter?
I was. Been a pretty half years.
Concerns.
Oh, yes. I look at, when I drive through a city, you know, I did this a long time ago. I was still like, hey, wow, what would I do in this situation? If I was, you know, if I was chief of this area. What would be my fire statistics? What would be my way of handling fire situations? You know, and I do that every day when I drive down the road. Just because that's what I'm used to.
Were you, were you employed here in town?
No, I wasn't employed. And I've seen this before, so that's why I'm coming at you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
It means components and I live on Noble Cove in Grand Forks. And I agree with all of Mona Leaks and Andrew Cross next comments. I have another unique perspective in a couple of different ways. I was a rental owner until a few years ago, but I would not be happy. Having to pay my own property taxes towards. Uh, the services that everybody's been talking about and then having to pay that developer's portion too. I heard a lot of arguments last night that made me think about different aspects of this. And one is that it's win-win for the city. There's no losing here because if this get tax incentive goes forward. They can look forward to getting full taxes on this property in fifteen years. Uh, it will be no cost. Well, if there is a cost, as we've explained, there's a cost in having that many residents. Living there, using the sewer, using the fire, police, ambulance and all those different services. We are still paying for that as taxpayers because they are not paying their portion. The other aspect I wanted to bring up is I lived in Georgia for twenty years and I was very involved. There with rezonings and, and working with the county commission when it county was my county there. And a lot of these tax allocation districts that they call in Georgia, they pass. And I believe they worked for twenty years and zero taxes. When the economy went sour around two thousand six through two thousand eight or nine. A lot of them went under. They were built with the intention to stimulate the economy to re-. Uh, revitalize areas that were getting blighted where it was a vacant mall or something like that they were gonna redo. Well, in that case, the county or the government never did collect their higher taxes. And in the meantime, these places went into foreclosure. So, there's no guarantee at the end of this that you are going to get this big revenue. So those are the only things. I don't want to take too much time. Thank you.
I could, just for the developer's sake, you know, there's a lot been said and I'm not going to argue the negative. Uh, we had great community here. Uh, we are besties or heads, so I'm not gonna. Presume that we're gonna go to a negative place. So, um, there was one question I just wanted from the developer's perspective I think should be clarified. And there was a discussion about, uh, the fees that are gonna be charged for Northridge. And Michaela Hewitt was able to make it to town. So if she could come in, um, provide the facts. She's been called out by name and so we all have, or several of us. So I think for her professional credibility, she should come and give you the real numbers that she's possible, if you don't mind.
Madam Chair Members of the Board, um, Michaela Hewitt, the Baker Chilling Municipal Advisory Firm, um, located in St. Paul. Um, here to, um, I know the reports in your packet. Um, I know there's been some revisions to the report based on some additional conversations with the developer. Um, you know, I'll start from the, um, from the beginning of the report. Um, we are hired by the city as an independent, um, financial advisory firm to review the, the application. And, uh, supporting financial information submitted by the applicant, um, for the proposed project. Um, what we have here in front of you is the report. Um, you know, I wanna just call up before I go through the report. I know there was a question on the twenty-five percent management fee, eleven percent amenity fee. Um, that is the percentage of the total operating expenses for each of those categories. So the management fee is, uh, calculated at six percent of the, uh, total revenues. Which is, uh, equates to about twenty-four, twenty-five percent of the total operating expenses. One thing to point out with the total operating expenses in that, um, table. Is it is including the property tax exemption, so that twenty-five percent is, um, a higher number, assuming the property tax exemption is in place. Um, of course, if with the total, um, property taxes in excess of a four hundred and fifty thousand, that percentage would be, uh, lower. But I did wanna point out that the percentages that are in there are not percentages of the calculated percentages. They're within, um, ranges of what's reasonable for the individual categories. But it is a percentage of what the total operating expenses of the, the project would be. Um, again, our review of the project is to understand if it would, uh, proceed, uh, but for the tax incentive. Um, that has been, um, provided. In this case with the property tax exemption, the developer had initially requested a twenty-year full property tax exemption. Um, to, uh, both provide financial feasibility and a reasonable rate of return, um, to the investors. Um, following our review of the, the project, and when I mean review of the project, we, uh, look at the sources and uses of funds. It is an approximate thirty-seven million dollar project financed by seventy percent debt of about twenty-six million and eleven million. Um, as equity, the remaining thirty percent. The, um, only way the developer is able to obtain the seventy percent financing is to, um. Meet certain underwriting criteria, including loan-to-value ratios, uh, debt coverage ratios. So in part, the property tax exemption, uh, with, as reviewed. Um, is a means of providing additional cash flow to the project in order to be able to obtain the debt financing levels. That, um, are, are prepared, that are included within the report. Um, part of our review again is to understand, uh, without the incentive, uh, would this project proceed as proposed? Um, and with the information that was shared and with our analysis, um, we have, um, made the finding that, uh, without. Or without the property tax, um, incentive or without a property tax incentive, um, this project as proposed would not proceed. Um, as the, um, annual property tax payments in full, uh, would reduce the operating. Uh, the, the net, uh, cash flow that's available to, uh, both, uh, provide. Or be able to pay the debt service on the long-term obligation as well as provide a reasonable rate of return to the developer. However, the actual amount and term of assistance is somewhat, um, negotiated. Meaning that first and foremost, the, uh, the debt coverage ratios need to be met. That's that stabilization of project, assuming refinancing. Uh, the term of assistance, uh, meaning the number of years and the total property tax exemption. Um, is what leads to the, uh, overall projected, uh, rate of return, um, internal rate of return to the developer. The higher the, uh, level of incentive, the greater the, the, um, rate of return is projected to be. Uh, part of our analysis is to understand the point where if it's too high of an incentive, it goes above what would be a reasonable rate of return. And that's why the, uh, original requested amount of twenty years full exemption has been, um, recommended to be reduced. Um, to a term of approximately fifteen years and a blended seventy-seven percent. Again, to try to provide, um, both the cash flow that's needed to, uh, meet the minimum debt coverage requirement to finance the project. But also to keep the, uh, rate of return within a reasonable, um, measurement. Um, I'll quickly state with reasonable, that's a different, um, term for everybody, totally understand that. However, there are investor benchmarks that say if you're, um, above, below a reasonable rate. Um, the investors aren't going to, um, uh, invest in your project. Um, the way interest rates are right now, uh, what we often hear is if the rate is too low, developers is gonna park their money and wait for the economy to improve. That's one of the options being contemplated. However, that's not providing new housing, it's not providing new opportunities, um, and, and that's part of the cost benefit analysis of, um. Of what, that's what, that is what the investor community will say if there's the rate of return is too low. It's not worth the risk of eleven plus million dollars for a sub-margin return. Um, and that's, that's across the board, that's across the nation, and that's why we look at those, um, both benchmarks. Um, so I, I think I just wanted to share some information relative to the, the, the analysis that has been completed. Um, the details that are within that analysis. The other thing I'll point out is, um, as I mentioned in the operating pro forma. The developer did share the, uh, projected, uh, operating rents for the studio up to four-bedroom units. Uh, we looked at what the average rents would be, that rents per square footage. Um, and we have other metrics, including, uh, CoStar report and, um, Price Waterhouse Cooper analysis. That does provide again benchmarks. We look at CoStar, the projected, uh, rents, uh, at completion. If you look at the average rents that are up on the board. Um, between the different studio, uh, unit types, it's just over a dollar sixty per square foot. When you look at projected rents for, um, twenty-twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, when this project would be completed and online. Um, the average rents are, are comparable to what CoStar is stating. The other thing I'll point out is with vacancy rates, um, you know, those are, there, there's a lot of numbers. And that's because there's a lot of different, um, apartment types. Uh, one of the other resources or resources that we look at, if you look at certain levels of apartments, they might have higher vacancy rates as compared to. One of the metrics we look at is considered a three-star or four and five-star. There are different vacancy rates for each of those different apartment types. Um, and when you look at the blended, um, uh, vacancy rates, uh, operating growth, things like that, they do vary. Um, so everything we look at, depending on what the, the source is, there are different metrics, um, based on both the apartment type. And how it's, it's rated. Um, so I just wanted to point that fact out. Um, and again, so the basis of our analysis is that, um, if there is no property tax exemption. The project is projecting to have negative cash flow for the first, um, eight to ten years. Um, and that's, uh, meaning that the project would not be able to support the level of debt financing of the seventy percent or twenty-six million. Uh, meaning that for the product, one option financially for the project to proceed would be to reduce. That level of debt to a point that the cash flow could support it. However, that would require a significant, um, increase in equity and that would drive down the rate of return. To again, a point that would be, um, below the reasonable range, um, resulting in a project that would not be financially feasible. So with that, um, I think I'd be happy to answer any questions or turn it back over to.
Um, do you know if the developer has looked into any HUD financing HUD grants or anything such as that?
I can, um, ask, defer that question to the developer. I do know there are certain HUD, um, funding programs that are out there. However, the, um, the underwriting criteria, the time to obtain the funding is, um, takes considerable time. Um, I work, currently working on a project now that's including HUD financing and they're saying they wouldn't even be able to close till eighteen, it starts in eighteen months. So just looking at fall of twenty-twenty-six. Um, so there's a factor of time versus this developer, uh, with the current funding that they're, or private financing that they're proposing. Um, would be able to start as soon as this fall.
Are there any, um, low-income units that are gonna be available in this property or not?
It's my understanding that this project is a hundred percent market rate. There, I believe, it's related to the apartment complex that is coming in front of us for, for Jero, I believe. Those are considered the affordable housing, a low-income housing, I don't know, to help you to use.
Because fair market rent, um, in Grand Forks and Crookston. For a one-bedroom is seven hundred and eighty-two dollars compared to eleven hundred is what this project will be. Uh, their market rent for a studio, um, I, sorry, I misspoke. The studio is eleven hundred dollars. It's seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars. For a one-bedroom, it's seven hundred and eighty-two dollars compared to, um, one thousand two hundred and eighteen. A three-bedroom unit, fair market rent is one thousand three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And this particular rent is twenty-one hundred dollars. So, um, it's unfortunate, I understand that, uh, the developer is looking at. Possibly high-end apartments. Our average income in the city of Grand Forks is sixty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Of our population, there is, uh, sixteen percent of our population in the city of Grand Fork. Grand Forks, excuse me, are listed in poverty. That's pretty, that's significantly higher than other areas. Unless you have in areas such as Clearwater County in, um, Minnesota. Or, um, Ramsey County, Benson County in Grand Forks, North Dakota. That has a higher population of Native Americans and a reservation there. Um, I just find it interesting that, I understand that we wanna have all sorts of apartments. Available for all sorts of individuals living near the city and in the county. I have nothing against that. My biggest concern, we have a transient population with the University of North Dakota. And with the Grand Forks, there are first base. I understand that. My biggest concern is that when individuals rent a unit and don't become a home owner. The, the tax base goes to the developer. There's not a tax base on the apartment renter. But to pay, say, um, twelve hundred dollars a month. Um, for a one-bedroom apartment is gonna cost over twelve thousand dollars. Um, for that unit for living. And after the twelve thousand dollars or whatever they pay, if there's amenities, if there's home. Or if there's association fees, whatever the pays may be. Um, it's, it's not, it's not a unit that's becoming, that, that family is becoming stabilized. They're in the apartment. Yes, they have a lease. I understand that. I understand that they're working in, they're contributing economic development to the community. But it would be nice to see, uh, developers come in to develop homes. And not four hundred, five hundred, six hundred thousand dollar homes. They're not affordable. Too many individuals in our community. It would be nice to have homes coming into the community that were affordable. For a variety of individuals with a variety of income levels. Not everybody can afford half a million or higher for a home. And I don't, I don't disrespect anyone who, who has that income level. Good for them, good for their education. I'm very happy for them that they're contributing toward our community. But I do have concerns with apartment units that come in. High-end apartment units, um, fair market rent is a standard. It's a national standard. That's what they go by when there's housing vouchers available, um, to individuals that get housing assistance. I don't know if, um, there's usually a lot of availability with our low-income housing here in Grand Forks. Usually there's a waiting. And it would be nice to see some low-income units being proposed. Yes, I understand. It's an eighteen-month process for HUD. I get it. It has to be shovel-ready. It takes a lot of work. I have seen financing done like that. We have done that ourselves at Tri Valley Opportunity Council Incorporated in person. It was an eighteen-month, so it was about twenty-four. But we now have, um, units, not just apartment units, but townhomes. Where individuals are getting some assistance to live in those townhomes, not only in Crookston, but also in Fisher. And so I know that the city, um, it's hard to work for, with HUD. Um, but we need to look at all income levels of the individuals coming into our community. Not just the income levels of those that are higher end.
Can you share if I could just, I just, um, summarize the projects that are in front of us and that you're likely to see. Uh, number one, we talked about, uh, well, it's been fine. With, you know, the city Grand Forks. Any development in the city of Grand Forks, I'll highlight the, uh, development on Grand Valley. Which is south of Sixty-second. The city has millions of dollars invested in infrastructure, uh, in part of cost shares. We've maxed out what we can do for the same rate quota on, on tax incentive. That's a two-year builder, two-year homeowner. Uh, we've deferred specials for up to three years. So, uh, we've. We've deferred specials for up to three years, so we've thrown about everything we can at the at single family homes and do and looking to do more. Just on the multi family, they just want to highlight, you have the one in front of you today. Ms. Hewitt is reviewing the domain, that's a project that is going to be in around, proposed on the new Google. That's a hundred and fifty three units. King's View is off of sixty second, that's forty five units. We are looking at reselling the Burkehold property, which is, you know, around seventeen forty second. We're looking at, you know, a multi year project by around plus or minus fifteen minutes. Those would all be market rent. Apartment, so it's going to be similar to what projects you're seeing here, and I don't know what the results are of those are going to be, but. The project we talked about is thirty nine thousand south, again, that's, I think to Commissioner Page, that's, that involves MAC. Construction and finance involves both commercial and involves the very free council, and they're the state and federal incentive for community. They're proposing a hundred and sixty five minute redevelopment, and so if City Council approves on Monday, then move that forward for the pre application process, that will go through. And obviously, what they're trying to do on that project is, because there is a slight time, there is a a fall. Selection process for both federal and state, so they're trying to get in line. They're trying to demonstrate the local community has done everything they can to set themselves up for success. And that project will probably be in front of you before they'll know, but at least they'll, they say will raise their qualifications because they have local. So we're kind of all in on lots of different things and and I don't want to belabor, we have some really great opportunities in front of you. Beyond the bomber, we're going to, you know, sadly move back to Albert. We've violated all those projects, there's a potential for thousands of permanent jobs. All of our institutions are running at one of their best phases, they were from Alter, the Grand Forks Air Force Base, University of North Dakota. We have all these acre about acre business projects coming our way. We just, why is housing, we want to make sure we don't lose opportunity, that's what comes here and say. And well, because you don't have housing for our world, so we're really intent on that, that's really what we're trying to do here. We're imperfect. You know, it's hard to say that we're imperfect, vacancy rates, we did multiple surveys. As we were told, you know, the apartment is location is select, some don't participate, so we went out and did our own informal. Information gathering and like all the information gathering, you know, it's easy to pick and choose. It's also easy to come up and be a critic here, we're in the arena, we're trying to work on this issue, it's not easy. And any town USA is working on this issue and, you know, thankfully, we have a mayor that's willing to work on these issues and when moves are drawn, he's worked on. And if I could just do one thing, just because Mr. Goss has called out. And we certainly, the city of Grand Forks, I don't mind doing any of that, so if Mr. Goss could come up and say. Regarding the state statutes and what we can and cannot.
Alright, thank you, I don't, I'm not going to call anybody else, they're all at their freezing year, their reading is of the various statutes. I've done. Quite a bit of research, I started, my research started when the exemption that the first introduced back from nineteen sixty nine. Went back and worked at the legislative history from that day forward and all of the legislation. Particularly with its century code forty dash seven point one dash one three. I don't dispute the fact that the statute says there's not to be an unfair advantage given. Which substantiates to the substantial detriment of the existing enterprise. What it says, I don't dispute that. It also says, however, that they're supposed to give due weight to that. That's the purpose of providing the notice to competitors. It's a purpose for him to be able to come up, anybody to come up. And say, I think there's there is some unfair competition, these are the reasons why. That's the reason why you as as policymakers, city council as policymakers, city council during that. A public hearing that's going to come up, it's to weigh that. That's what the statute says. I'm not disputing that. What I do dispute, however, is that I'm not cherry picking language. Section from nineteen ninety four. It does, this is language that came from Legislative Council explaining. What the statute, what they were trying to do with this payment and loom, that's when this came into into being. And you got to bear in mind, the first subsection of forty fifty seven point one oh three talks about property tax exemptions. You got to turn the page, you go to subsection two. That says, in addition to, or in lieu of the exemption, you can offer property tax exemption, or excuse me, but pilot in payment and loom. The explanation that was given by Legislative Council to that to that statute was that. It does not apply only to agricultural commodity of facilities. This applies any revenue producing enterprise that would qualify under this chapter. They went on, and this is Mr. John Wong's wall step, again with Legislative Council. Saying that the language below relating to payments in lieu of property taxes are for any qualifying business. Which is any revenues producing enterprise. Anybody can qualify for payments in lieu of taxes. Yeah, I am going to read that and I'm going to read that retro, anybody. It didn't stop, and and I'm not the only one reading this language. Attorney General, in an opinion from nineteen ninety six. Was comparing property tax exemptions with payment and loom. In the in the particular circumstances from that opinion. It was the for property tax exemption, you had to qualify, you had to get that before construction commence. Aiming the loom, you don't have to get the the qualified and get that approved before construction commence. So the question was posed by, this was Trail County State's attorney, was posed as to what we do here because somebody has come in and asked for. Property tax exemption after the the property had had already started to be constructed or had been constructed. There, the Attorney General pointed out, loom of tax means instead of or as a substitute. And said that there is a clear difference between the payment and loom tax that was adopted in ninety four, the one on exemptions. And cited to the very same language that I've relied upon in my legislative history. Saying that. Payments and low taxes option that could be used in combination with one place of property tax exemptions. For a project that begins construction after the the ninety four effective date. Payments and low taxes could apply to any kind of facility and do not apply only to a cultural processing facility. So they actually encouraged. The Trail County to tell the developer, in this instance, go for a payment and loom instead of property tax exemption, you don't. You don't qualify for an exemption, you qualify for payment and loom because that's different. Later on, the the question was raised about the Attorney General in ninety eight issued another opinion. As to whether a speculative building, meaning something that wasn't revenue producing, but was bought. For speculation as to the valuation increase. There, the the question was, does that, is that qualifies a revenue producing enterprise or not, or a project that qualifies for payment and loom? Attorney General said, that's a question of fact determined by the views palette. Whether a speculative building that is owned by a private developer and revenue producer, I'm using all of this research, I'm using this data. To reach my conclusion that. A payment and loom property tax is different than a property tax exemption under subsection one. It applies to a project, project is designed as revenue producing. And the legislative history behind this shows it applies to any of them. Now, I know, and I think it was about in twenty thirteen, there were some modifications to to subsection one. About property tax exemptions, and I think they called it the Walmart bill. Because there was an issue in Landen, Walmart was getting an exemption. Interestingly, they didn't do anything in subsection two. They only addressed the property tax exemption. So subsection two has been virtually unchanged. Since it was adopted in nineteen ninety four. Now, we have to go through an additional exercise, we have to now go to both the school district and county to get this approved. And that's what I really did. So I'd be more than happy to, I I stand by my legal opinion, I stand by the opinion of the city. I've shared my research with the state's attorney, shared with the school district attorney as well. I'd be more than happy to answer any question.
I just wanted to highlight, also, I I'm going to give the council president Sandy and the mayor one. Words, there's been some words that were, we're giving money away to the developers, and again, we're not, we're deferring some of the tax revenue. Coming in on these projects and I'll just, right now, we're proposing the ninety percent over five years, then eighty over your six or ten, and then eleven for fifteen, be sixty. That would be additional revenue in the first five years, this is on a per year basis, the county is. Approximately fifteen thousand, your six or ten, at that eighty percent would be twenty seven, twenty eight thousand per year in additional revenue and then. Near the look for fifteen is fifty three, fifty six thousand in additional revenue per year. And then finally, year sixteen, we're estimating, the annual amount would be a hundred and thirty four thousand for the project. Last night, the the school board. Made a determination that they need. Among all the taxing entities, and I think they said this. They have a priority to get more money and maybe the city and the county can defer, but there is need for the money. Obviously, our 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 case is to say, well, you know, if the project isn't, or we all get zero. And so, but they are willing to negotiate, so the second part of that, they said, no, but they're willing to negotiate. I think ultimately, the city council on at the public hearing on Monday asked to accept, you know, whatever on both the school. Board did and also whatever the county, I think they had the, from a correct, Mr. Goss, they have the final authority after that public hearing. Which, whatever determination, so whatever you recommend has to go to that public hearing. So, anyway, with that, just to conclude, and we've got a long meeting with budgets, we're sorry for. The language, but the mayor is here and also council president, I don't know if they want to any conclusion for us, but thanks for all your time. It's always great partnering with the county and thanks for all.
Thank you, commissioners, appreciate you hosting everyone tonight. I I do want to take a few minutes to talk about some of the history I have related to housing in Grand Forks. I was asked by the Honorable Al Burshman and Mayor Brown to lead the Blue River Commission on Housing. For the city of Grand Forks, two thousand eleven and two thousand thirteen, Terry and I were on the council back then and I'm sure he remembers. So somehow I became known as the expert in related to housing for the community or at least the city council. So I spent a lot of my tenure on the council talking about how things and the experiences and the things that I learned back then. And how it relates to what the city does today, related to incentivizing and trying to. Talk graciously talk developers into investing their money into our community. Back in two thousand eleven and thirteen, myself and Mike Bergeron, who's CFO at the Ralph Lauren Stadium. Who he, Mr. Bergeron, is a finance and economics expert. Along with Mr. Mark Schill, who is also widely considered an expert in economics and statistics. And is a proud supporter of our community, Mr. Schill, which is why Mr. Schill was happy to provide a. Freely provide a letter of support today for this project, and I'm sure he would for all the other projects that the city's working on, simply because he knows. How important it is that we continue to see construction of residential homes within our within our community. Ultimately, the commission resoundingly found that we have a shortage of housing. Of all types at all price points in our community. And ultimately, the the result was. We need construction of apartments and single family homes at all price points. To help keep the price of housing down, whether the, and we also recognize that. Affordable means different things to different people, and so we need to. Absolutely need to provide affordable housing for people, and again, that means additional housing at all price points. Because additional housing at six hundred thousand dollars. Gives somebody that that's in a three hundred thousand dollar home a place to move up, freeing up space for people that want. Either want or can only afford a three hundred thousand dollar house. Also, there was a, to speak to affordability. Whether you agree that we should be talking about the flood twenty years later or not. The fact that eight hundred homes, mostly in Lincoln Park neighborhood, mostly first time home buyer homes were destroyed. Continues to have a severe impact on the housing availability and first time homeowner availability within our community. If we could get a builder, if I could build, because I build homes occasionally, if I could build. A home for three hundred thousand dollars, I would. The fact of the matter is, it can't be done unless the city, unless the county, unless the federal government wants to subsidize that construction. Which perhaps we should should look into that. Last time I talked to voters, most of them, the ones that are in here, they would completely disagree. About the city of Grand Forks incentivizing single family homeowners because they didn't get an incentive on on their home. So it puts us sort of in a pickle because people are telling us they want us to help them. With affordability in single family homes, yet the same people are right here today saying, don't provide incentives for housing construction. So it's kind of a catch twenty two reminder in my mind. The study also found that the city of Grand Forks needs to have developers build between two hundred and three hundred rental units a year. And we haven't been anywhere near that. I think Val loan speaks volumes and I don't have the exact numbers on me, but I'd be happy to share them with you. We aren't, we haven't been anywhere near the the number of apartments that that the city is needed. So from the results of the commission, the city of Grand Forks did many things to try to incentivize. Single family home construction, construction and ownership, we deferred specials for three years. We increased the duration of repayment of specials on for roads, the lights, those sort of things. Many of them went from fifteen or twenty years to twenty to twenty five years to try to make the the homes more affordable for people. We again maximize the Mr. Phil's point earlier, we maximize all of the things that we can legally do according to the state. Two year new construction, five, five year residential remodel. Tax abatements, we've done everything we can legally that the state will allow us on on single family housing. Again, Mr. Phil mentioned this, we've been, we've been trying to lobby the state to help us because we want to find ways to get more single family construction. Fact of the matter is, the the builders in our community, which were limited to the numbers. They're building as many as they can and they're building to the price points where they can maximize their profitability. I don't blame any of them for that, doesn't help us with the the shortage of housing that we have in the affordability issue. We will have an affordability issue forever, it is what it is. Anyway, without additional housing, without. Additional rental units. We will see, and and you probably hear it yourself, you hear people complaining about. The affordability issue in our community, if we don't add more units, it will only get worse. So not taking action, not helping the people that are willing to invest their money, their personal money today. Into our community, not helping them get us across the finish line, is going to exacerbate the problem.
Thank you, President Sandy, for that information. One of the things that I continue to hear is that granted, the cost of housing is high and that that's everywhere. But the taxes seem to be very high in the city, in Grand Forks County, city included. When you take a look at the population, and this is every man, woman, child, based on the city budget. Minot and and Bismarck are about forty eight, forty nine hundred per person, man, woman, child. When you take Grand Forks, man, woman, child, based on the city budget, it's five thousand, it's over. It's five thousand, it's over five thousand dollars, five thousand seventy five dollars. When you take a look at Fargo, at their city budget and their population, obviously it's higher, it's a large city in the state. Their, uh, tax rate for every man, woman, child is two thousand eight hundred and fifty three dollars. So in the city of Grand Forks, Grand Forks County, and with those that live out the county not paying city taxes. But in the city of Grand Forks, it's high, it's the highest in the state. And that I'm not defaulting anybody for that. I think that the city has done a wonderful job in trying to give as many amenities. To the city residents as possible, parks, recreation, you name it. Um, the only thing of it is, is that with the housing issue. Um, and having a shortage potentially of both houses and apartments. Um, it's difficult because not the, the taxpayer apartment owners. Um, on homeowners, their taxes are high. And that just exacerbates the problem more. So I'm just saying that I agree with you entirely and yes, we did lose many homes that were in a lower income bracket. Due to the river flooding. Um, but we just need to figure out a way that we want builders to come in. We want economic development in our county and in our city. But it's hard, it's difficult to look to the existing taxpayers. Which we're the third largest city in North Dakota. Now we used to be the second, but now we're the third, Bismarck went over us. Um, it's just difficult because every tax incentive that we provide to, um, businesses coming in. We try on the economic development side as hard as we possibly can. But in looking at that, it's difficult, um, in expecting existing taxpayers to pay not only their portion. Valuation of their property, whatever it may be, residential, commercial, but then having to pay for. Um, somebody else's tax valuation for a period of time, whether it's five years, ten years, fifteen years, twenty years. It's difficult because they're paying high taxes already. And we're a part of it. The city is a part of it. We're a part of it. And we're being told by the state legislature that we can't go above a three percent increase. That's hard. That's very hard. It costs money to hire people. It costs money to give them benefits. It costs money to run all the city services and the county services that we do. What are we doing at this point? Budget cuts everywhere. We're not the only one. I'm sure you've had that discussion. Fargo's had that discussion. Fargo is cutting a hundred and forty four million dollars in their budget. It's not just a cha-ching, cha-ching, cha-ching. We don't wanna take away jobs. We don't wanna take away services. It's hard. So, thank you for sharing that, but this is the dilemma we all face. And it's not an easy dilemma at all. Thank you for sharing that and thank you for being a part of that housing, um, credential or that housing group. That's hard work. It's very hard work. And I wish you could build those houses for under three hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, Richard, did you?
Just for a sec. Don't worry there, I saw your comment. And I know we just had a fundamental difference of opinion on some things, but we've had some good discussion and we'll have some more. But I just wanna get up, I don't feel attacked at all, Mr. Gellstein. I just wanted to address a couple of things as far as the pilot program legislative council. So in Mr. Wall's, there you quote, um, from the ninety fourth legislative council, a special session. In those minutes published, it stated that any revenue producing enterprise, quote, that would qualify into this chapter, end quote. Could be considered for the pilot program, which is exactly what you said. Um, but I guess the way I'm not an attorney, like I said, so take it for what it is, but me interpreting that would mean that. Under this chapter would be everything that's on there. So that would include primary sector. Um, for the five year, it would include a commodity for the ten, where the, a primary sector would apply to everything. So that's why I asked the question and this is awesome that we can engage in this discussion here. Um, the other thing that was in that special session, Representative Tim specifically asked the question of, I suppose, quote from the minutes. You're saying that if taxes will be five hundred thousand in year ten. They could say, we'll charge two hundred fifty thousand starting in year one, end quote. And then Al Hauser, legislative director at that time in the governor's office said, quote. That is how I would see it working and that is how I understand other states see it work. So that's why I question. Is it just to spread those payments out or is it actually free for all for twenty years, whatever you want? Those are my couple of things. And then again, I'm not an attorney, so I maybe I don't understand them or don't have all the knowledge, but I don't have all the knowledge. But those attorney general opinions, I don't believe those directly correlate to what we're talking about, the questions that I'm asking. Think I'm somewhat intelligent, but I just don't understand. So maybe you and I can have a better discussion. So I can understand how those relate to my questions. Um, but I just think, and I encourage you guys, somebody to reach out to the legislative council and find out what the interpretation actually would be. And what the application would be. So I just wanted to hit on those, cause you've been on some things that I've been reading, but I just, I don't understand. So if I have the questions, I would think maybe some other people would have the same.
A couple of comments. I just wanna, uh, wanna jump the gun a bit, but I, I, I got all these documents. But I haven't had to go through them yet. But just off the ballpark, the one that looks like this. It's calling for a mill increase and valuation increase to the point where we're gonna be violated to state law. So we're not gonna take a knife to our budget. I'm busting off a chainsaw. So we, we gotta get serious here. And how this relates to this is, this is the first of five projects. We, we are gonna be in significant trouble paying our bills and we're gonna be really in trouble. If everything that comes before is for taxes, we're gonna abate fifteen years or twenty years. We don't have the money. I, I don't know how clear I can be on this. We're gonna be struggling. People are gonna be. I mean, I got a list. They're, they're, they're not gonna be happy with what I'm gonna be proposing. But we're, we're not even, we're not in, in state law right now. We just, this, this isn't a commentary on that. Don't take it the wrong way. I'm just saying, it's a reflection of where we're at, of how far we are from what we need to do. Just to be within the state law, which means a tax increase, which I don't do. So if we do all these, I could, I can guarantee the people discounting, your taxes are going up accounting. If we, we go down the road of improvement, all five of these projects, there is no way we're gonna be able to do it. There is no way. And we're gonna put ourselves in a bind for ten or fifteen or twenty years. The, the Grisco goes almost to twenty fifty. We are, we are in a hurt bag. I just, have I topped the wall? I mean, do, do. And we'll go through these numbers, but I'm just saying, we are not in the, in, in, have the ability. To just start everyone that builds, not pay property taxes fifteen years. And the ninety nine point nine percent who are, are gonna be prepared for tax increases at three percent every year till you die. That's about, cause I'll be dead long before that level. These, these things will be going on, I'm gonna be gone. I'll be dead buried somewhere, I'll be chewing on my casket or something. We are setting the precedent for the future. Every, every apartment building, I won't say every, I think a majority of the buildings in the future are gonna come forward for this down the road. And so we're, we're, we are opening up Pandora's box. Um, income in twenty thirty seven doesn't pay the bills in twenty twenty seven. Uh, once again, I, I get it. I see the number. I, I understand the concept, but it doesn't help us. We don't get whatever eleven thousand something per student. We don't have seventy four million dollars in sales tax. It's almost all property tax. And so just, I'll, I'll make a trip from my vote. I am not raising taxes on everybody else in the county. So ten down the road, ten or twelve people get a deal. We don't have the money. And, and, and if, and if it gets to the point where this, the demand is that much. I'm red, white, blue enough, confident enough that America, that somebody's gonna start building apartments, cause they're gonna see the, the potential make money. So that's where I'm at and. Uh, this is serious business here, so I suggest you think long and hard before you vote because if this goes through, go more around the way. At, at, at a minimum. Thank you.
All right, any other conversation?
I'll move to deny the property tax exemption.
Specifically.
For this project.
For the hundred percent.
The whole thing, but, excellent, no, no negotiations. I move to deny it. Not interested.
I don't think I'm comfortable with that, Terry. Commissioner Birkey, I think, think a negotiation. Um, in my opinion, just one person. A little bit more reasonable. And if it comes down to a knowledge. But I, I think. Similar to what school did, let's at least see. Cause this is, here's, here's the problem, in my opinion. So we're calling commissioners. And I don't really. Want to, in my opinion, just one out of five, I don't wanna screw up projects, cities. I don't wanna stop progress, but I also don't want. Crafty deals set in front of us. That's all. If maybe there's a. I don't know. Madam Chair, I mean, is there a way that, is there a way to negotiate it to a, to a yes? Maybe there is. I don't know where, where the commissioner beach and commissioner roster are. Maybe it is just a no, I don't know.
My comfortability would be no for the hundred percent, cause I don't think that's reasonable, but I think there has to be some sort. Agreement that we can come to. Again, maybe it isn't, but to say that the negotiations are off the table, I just don't think that that's being a good partner, cause we're not looking at it because. Okay, say it's ninety percent. You're still earning ten percent more revenue than we did before. So it just doesn't. There a second?
I would second Mr. Brinkes. Okay.
For no negotiation.
No, my good.
Um, we have seventy two thousand seven hundred and eight citizens in Grant Forks County. Our largest economic development, uh, sector in Grant Forks County is agriculture. Farmers, they pay taxes on their properties, on their land that they farm. Right now, throughout the United States, the price of corn is at an all time low. The price of wheat is at an all time low. The price of soybeans is at an all time low. The price of any other commodity that is farmed in Grand Forks County. With the exception of sugar beet, there are some sugar programs that help out the, the, um, the sugar beet industry. But most of these crops are at an all time low. There are many farmers having auction sales, quitting, getting out of the business, cause they can't afford to keep. They can't afford it. They don't make any money. Yes, there's money for the farm, farm programs in the big beautiful bill. But what they will do for farm, the farm industry is, we don't know. I don't know if my husband will farm next year, because I don't think we can afford it. It's too expensive. Everything is expensive. But the prices of, of seed input, tractors, everything never goes down. If the cost of fuel goes down, your chemicals, your fertilizers, whatever are derivatives of oil, they don't go down. And it's hard for a farmer to make it. This is our biggest economic development factor in Grand Forks County. The fact that a Grisso is coming in, wonderful. That's great to hear. You know, we need more housing. I don't disagree. But of the seventy two thousand seven hundred and eight citizens in this county, I don't know if they can take anymore. We're pushing them to the limit, both in the county and in the city. It's difficult. It's a hard decision. It's very hard. If I could do a half vote on each side, I would. Because I, I want to agree with, with, with our chair. We wanna be a good partner. We wanna be, work together to move forward. We try hard to deal with economic development. And I understand housing. We want those corporations to come in and all the work that our economic development groups do. We want, you know, Mr. Lund to be successful in attracting more businesses into the county. I don't disagree with that at all. But I don't, I just don't know how much more that we can push. I don't disagree with coming up with a different solution. A different tax base, maybe amount of years or percentage, ninety percent, ten percent is better than nothing. But we need to, and I don't know if there's affordability with these apartment complexes or not, I don't know. It's a tough decision.
It's true too, right now, the judge falls on your court.
Yeah, so decision, we can do one of two things. We can either sit and we do nothing and continue to keep going, get, hope people build houses. Or we can try and negotiate and figure out a yes, because I think this community does a really good job trying to work together. And just flat out saying no, without looking at other options, I think is a really valid.
Chair, I, I would just like to say that, you know, our entire budget is, is funded by property tax, one hundred percent. We don't have a lot of pockets to pick like the city of Grand Forks does. You know, we don't have sales tax. We don't have any of that. And it's like, I agree with Commissioner Birkey. We've got some big decisions to make on this budget. And, uh, I think if people need apartments or builders wanna build apartment, they will build them. You know, I don't know that, I mean, somebody will come in without any tax incentives and, and build an apartment building. Uh, I just think, you know, we, we do open Pandora's box if we allow this to happen. Because, uh, there's gonna be a lot more coming before this commission. It might do sense.
All right, so we're gonna vote, we have a person, a second to know to the hundred percent and no negotiations going further. That accurate?
Correct.
And we'll take a roll call vote, Terry?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
I'd like to see some negotiations, so I'm ready for no. I think there's. There's gotta be a, there's gotta be a sweet spot. Where everyone can be happy, I think, with any negotiation. Like, everyone wants to, this stuff. Yeah. And I think there's gotta be a sweet spot. And I, I completely appreciate Commissioner Ross and Commissioner Birkey's position on this. I mean, they're a direct competitor of mine, like, my personal business life. But I just, as a, as in my, wearing my county commissioner hat, instead of my personal business hat. I, ah. I gotta, I gotta think that there's a, a way to find, I guess, and if there's not, then so. But, but I, I, I don't wanna slam the door on it, if I, in my personal opinion. Uh, I don't, I don't wanna give away the farm. And I, I don't wanna make, like, for instance, Mr. Cowherd made outstanding points. And truth, I'm gonna address you personally. You made an incredible. Calls last week when I was not in person and, cause of personal issues with my wife and then this week. You made incredible points. Like you, you, there's no denying anything that you're saying. Now, no way to deny, you couldn't even make a, a devil's advocate. Fight against what you're saying. It isn't fair. It flat out isn't. And I'm in the same business as they, that you're in. And so it, it, it just isn't. Uh, so I'm trying to, you know, take those scales and say like, is the housing need? So I'm trying to, you know, take those scales and say like, is the housing need. Meet the, the threshold of, you know, and I, and, and, and my chairwoman and myself, we've been making phone calls. And finding out if it's truly that dire. It, it, it depends on who you call and what kind of type of apartments that they have, but it. It does seem like there's definitely a need. And so I don't want you to take this as a slap across the face, sir, because you've been a great community member for umpteen years. And we've done a lot for this. I just want to have a chance to possibly, uh, relook at it and see if there's a way we could make it more fair. For you and for the others, just like.
Sure, Mike, Mike, can I respond?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, well, no, I do, I mean, my question is twofold now is, okay, so the city's gonna step up. I mean, city, county, school district, for this particular job, the project. Is gonna step up and give them six point seventy seven million dollars roughly, box, okay? What, my question for you is, what will the city, county, school district do for the existing owners? That have to put more money into their properties to try and compete with a two hundred and forty thousand dollar unit? I think you have to keep in mind, a two hundred and forty thousand dollar unit is a high end unit. That's what you're approving, you're not approving. I would say maybe twenty percent of the population of this county could afford to live in these years.
All we're approving right now is continuing the conversation, essentially.
Right.
And I'm one of those that has units that can't match up with what they're proposing.
Right.
I mean, it, it, it's money out of, off my family's dinner table.
Exactly.
And so, and, and you are as well, and so I'm weighing all these things very heavily. This is one of the more difficult, um, things that's ever come in front of me since I've been on the county board. Because I can totally see both sides. The how, you know, the need for housing for people and also the, the fact that it is inherently unfair.
It is, it's unjust, it's wrong.
Yeah.
It's completely wrong.
I, I don't.
If we vote for stealing money from the taxpayer to put it into developers' pocket? That's the way I see it.
No, I don't disagree with you at all. I, I, I appreciate your not exploding or being, you know, very candid in your remarks. I completely receive both sides, I, I just want a further conversations.
Yeah.
And, you know, if it winds up, we can't come to an agreement, then the county is not gonna prove their side of it. You know, school can do what they want, the city can do what they want.
Well, like Mr. Ross and Mr. Birkey have said, you have one source of income. And you are giving up. And you guys are already. So you're gonna have to tax the taxpayer.
You're a hundred percent.
If you give up, if you give into this.
There won't be a zero.
No, it's gonna be an increase, it's pretty simple to figure out. If you give somebody else a tip, somebody's gotta pick it up, right? It's not that hard. And as long as they say we're not giving anybody any money, I think six point seventy seven million dollars is a lot of shit, a lot of money. If we're not giving anybody money. Right?
Well, we basically said no without we.
I know, but that's our ask, is what I'm going, okay?
Right.
Madam Chair, I don't know about affordability of, um, the apartment unit or, uh. Builders coming forward, but, um, I know we can't do the higher rates that the city is doing, we just can't. Um, but, and I don't know what this would end up being like, but what if, you know, years one to zero to five, there is a thirty five percent discount. Which means we take in sixty five percent of the taxes from those units. What if you're six to ten, there's a twenty five percent discount, we take in seventy five percent of those taxes. Eleven years, eleven to fifteen, there's a fifteen percent discount, we take in eighty five percent of those taxes. Year sixteen to twenty, there's a ten percent discount, we take in ninety percent of those taxes. After year twenty, year twenty one and on, there's a hundred percent that they pay in taxes. I'm not saying that this is gonna make it or break it as far as a decision, but at least it's an opportunity. The county is going to get some tax revenue, but it's not going to be greater than fifty percent, up to a hundred percent. It's gonna be thirty five percent, twenty five percent, fifteen percent, ten percent discounts. I don't know if that'll work, but I'm just throwing that one out there and so far Keith hasn't fallen out of his chair.
Yeah, well, I think we can, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say, first of all, uh, I think anyone knows me, Mr. Feeling, just saying, Mr. Scavish, Mr. Presensky. I hold the record for most losses in the city council, it's not even close, it will never be broken. So there's no ill will from mine, I don't think there's any ill will from any old gentleman, so there, there's no ill will here. It's just a debate, a discussion, a disagreement, no big deal. Uh, the second thing is, I just want to, what, uh, I don't know, this, this wants to be, could you just summarize? The, the vote is to go into negotiations, how does that work, what's the timeframe, who's on that, what, maybe we just. Whatever we gotta do to make sure we follow the rules, if you just go through that, please, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Um, if the board wished to reject the proposal, but notify the city that the county wished to negotiate the proposal. Um, the requirements of the century code would be that we would have to notify the city of such in writing, uh, by that thirty day mark, which is. And then thereafter, the negotiations would ensue, the century code doesn't have specific time limitations or timelines, but that negotiation.
We never knew, we'd give us some of them thirty days, right? Either agree or disagree, and that would cost.
Madam Chair, members of the board, with regard to this proposal, the thirty days is just for the county's response to their proposal. For future projects, it would follow the same timeline so that, um, within thirty days of receipt of that proposal. The board would have to make a decision and submit their decision in writing to the back.
And then, well, Madam Chair, then I guess you need to come up with a plan to, who's negotiating all that, so just.
No, that's, that's what I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what we should have.
Right, so.
I think.
I'm comfortable with you going with who you want to put on or, uh, pull someone, want a commissioner, but we need to just.
Does that need to be put on of a motion?
Well, I, I don't know, I said, I'm sure the rules if we have to vote on, or if she was, I'm just saying, we need to see that come up plan, get going on this.
Negotiation, the city has brought it.
So this is the part of the process is, is this, uh, and, and just. As long as it is spot on, right? Is that you have to provide a letter explaining your reasons why you don't want to participate. And then, um, also to, to describe whether you're willing to negotiate terms of this property taxes. That's, and there is no timeline as to when it needs to be done, however, city is gonna have to go forward with it's, over here. Believe it's Monday, right?
Yeah.
Uh, we'll go forward and city council estimated, made a decision as well. Right? Um, you're not the only governing body that has to make a decision. Public hearing, uh, the city council have to make a decision as well. So your letter would, would simply trigger, assuming the city council, uh, wants to go forward with that, that negotiation, we may, um, agree to do that. You know, then, then we start initiating the negotiation by that point. Uh, again, the developer is gonna have to be a party to that as well. Uh, and so if, if you're not trying to guide, you're not my client, I'm not letting Ms. Wongstead do that. But if, if I'm in your position, you might, if you're going to do that, might want to designate somebody. To, uh, be a member of that negotiating team on behalf of the county. I wouldn't recommend you have three of them. It'd be one or two, maybe Miss Wongstead, uh, and a commissioner or something like that, I mean, that up to you, but if you're going to go down that path. Should probably designate somebody, uh, doesn't mean that the negotiation will occur, there's, there's another governing body that has made that decision as well, right?
Miss Wongstead, so would it be you, you would, it's something new, obviously, so somebody from the county, someone from the city, somebody from the school district. Getting together, I'm assuming the developer would have to be there as well, and sitting in a room and have that discussion and then bring out that they're governing board to discuss. Something that.
Madam Chair, members of the board, that's my understanding, um, but I think ultimately it would come back to the full board.
So it's essentially a suck. Okay, I'd be more than happy to, um, work on behalf of the county for the negotiations, I mean, if anybody else wanted to step up.
That, that true, would we, would we have to have a motion to deny the current request, but open it for negotiations?
Madam Chair, you do, so there was a motion and a second to reject and then no negotiations that failed. Commissioner Ross, do you still need a, a motion and a second to make a decision on the application then?
We don't move that motion.
And negotiate, and you're gonna, you and Miss Wongstead, how about, if that's okay?
Yes.
You and Miss Wongstead represent the county in negotiations.
Yeah.
Okay, she has a question.
Madam Chair, just one point of clarification, the county's response back to the city is to state the reason we're rejecting. So perhaps the motion could include.
The tax base.
Could I put in here, we don't have any money?
The tax basis, the reason why, and would, uh, and that would be part of the motion.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the, we need a second.
Did you second?
I, I can second.
I'm sorry, I thought, I thought. All those in favor of the motion, say aye, aye, both.
Aye. Like we can system.
Very good, we beat this stuff, I just want to.
No, I mean, I am, the horse is dead in the cave.
Alright. I'm assuming, if, if anybody want to stay for the rest of it, for that topic, I think.
Love to.
Two minutes, two minutes break.
Nick West, Nick West, if he wants to stay to the, to the very end and make some work.
Terry, are you okay on that MOU?
Yeah, I believe Mr. Galt was gonna write up an MOU, and then, and then when that's done.
Sorry to lay.
Oh, okay, no, 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 we're good, oh, cheers, I didn't know. Yeah, it was my.
Over there. Yeah, figured out there, the door on this side.
Alright. Did he, did he?
I'm.
Uh, first item today is the request for a. variance and specialty use permit by Ralph.
Also moved on the next one.
All right, uh, we have to vote on it.
Yeah, I I need to know more. I read it, but I.
Sure, sure. Yep. No, it's a it's the property is currently the current memory fireworks location. Just east of town on on Highway two. They are asking for a reduction for this site year setback from a hundred to twenty-five feet. Uh, we are recommending approval on that. Based on there is already an existing shelter built to provide a buffer for many residents. Um, there aren't any residential structures near it, close to one and a half miles south. Um, they're also requesting a specialty use permit for a. Storage, self-storage facility, site plan has been included in the staff report. Uh, the township recommended approval, the request, and so did the County Planning Commission at their July first meeting. So with that, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Some questions, Mr. Makefield?
Uh, second item is to consider the application of burger enterprises to amend its specialty use permit. To, uh. Have a new cell for their inner landfill. As far as staff reported is in section seventeen of Bloomington Township. Uh, it is in our airfield reserve area. I did get a recommendation from the. Uh, air airbase, they recommended approval of it. Uh, currently, the inner landfill is within all the state health department guideline. Also included is an inspection report from them. With that. The planning commission also recommended approval at their June third meeting. And the township also recommended approval of the request. So with that, I would be happy to answer your questions.
Second.
I just have one question, uh, uh, in there. You mentioned, I don't know if it's, I want to make sure we got it in there. That one of the conditions you wanted was that they must follow the approved truck route. Do we need to make that part of the motion or is that, I couldn't tell if that was part of the previous specialty use permit condition or not. So do we need to add that?
No, as long as you guys want the same truck route, it it was part of the original.
Okay, I'll make sure. Okay, yeah, thank you.
Uh, next item is the MOU for building inspections. I. Uh, we we did attend the the city council meeting. Uh, last week and the the city council did approve. Approve the MOU. Uh, the only change I really had was they need to change the. Auditor's name from Debbie Nelson to Colleen. Uh, other than that. Uh, I I don't have a copy of it here, but Mr. Pierre was with us. So with that, I'd. Like permission for the co- or for the chair to sign the MOU once we get that handled.
They're able to sign this MOU and. The rest of whatever else needs to be done. This was one of the smartest things we ever.
I just, you know, there is one slight thing to check to check on. It was a, it had to do with the. Think you had to make, I don't know, maybe a paragraph you're setting is gonna add in. So you'll see to look at it or bear the old one, but. She had the motion is to approve it contingent upon her review and you sign. So I don't think it's a big deal. Shouldn't be an issue. I think it was. Legal talk, so you should have thought of that.
All right, next item is to extend the our moratorium on wind farms and solar farm. They it is set to expire. Uh, currently, we're doing a land use compatibility study. Uh, estimates are eighteen months to finish that. So, uh, I guess at this point, I just ask for a motion to extend. Both uh, both moratoriums for an additional eighteen months.
Your person is like any further discussion? Is that based on the one first one or both solar and wind?
Just for clarification, you're requesting eighteen months starting.
Um, last item I have today is, uh, the request from U N D Aerospace to amend their specialty use permit. To add a new runway to their U A S facility in section thirty-one of Oakville Township. This was talked about at length at the planning commission. Oakville Township recommended approval. Highway Department record recommended approval. Um, again, we're waiting for this. Uh, land use compatibility study to be completed. Uh, so we haven't heard anything back from the Air Force Base. They had. Said that they had some concerns. So, um, my proposal is to, uh. Put this on the same time timeline as the moratoriums. Uh, once that compatibility study is, uh, finished, then we can, uh, make a. Decision on that, but, uh, at this time, I would recommend tabling that for eighteen months to coincide. I just wanna. Have everything on the same timeline, so I don't kind of keep track of three different issues at the same time.
I would, Madam Chair, I would move approval of that motion.
I had a business development for the U N D Aerospace Foundation. I just turned my, uh, fortieth anniversary. Selling flight training and aircraft control training for the University of North Dakota. Um, Gorman Field is, uh, one of a kind. Enhancement to the unmanned aircraft ecosystem in the city of Grand Forks and Grand Forks County. I would contend it is likely, uh, the best asset that our community has for unmanned aircraft because. It caters to the students at the University of North Dakota, which has the largest unmanned aircraft, uh, flight training program in the country. Our, uh, our request, um, is to not add a runway. Our request is to put in a hard surface runway. We already have a runway. We have a runway that fixed gear aircraft can use today. It's just grass. The, uh, uh, concept of adding a hard surface runway to us because. Um, the university is doing significant research projects in unmanned aircraft, uh, utilization. And integration into the national airspace system. Um, and it having a hard surface provides a significant level of safety. For the people that are operating there as well as, um, it doubles. It doubles. So we have currently have one, um, we'll call it a vertipad. It's a concrete slab that is a a very convenient space that has power and fiber optics. Um, to allow the University of North Dakota to launch, um, their scan eagles. But also it it acts as a vertipad for vertical takeoff and landing. Adding the hard surface runway will allow us to add additional power and additional fiber optics. Through multiple different pads that are essentially, uh, connected together. So we will have multiple vertipads. Um, plus, uh, the ability to allow, um, small unmanned aircraft to land on on the hard surface as well. We, um, recognize that there were concerns. We heard the concerns that were addressed at the first. Uh, meeting where this came up with planning and zoning. I I would like to address those issues because had I been there at the time. I think we could have eliminated some of the confusion. Certainly the confusion that, uh, Mr. Ross brought up. Related to the Air Force and the Air Force Base's support for, uh, for our radar. Um, I'm I'm not sure what, uh, adding a, a vertical. Adding a, um, concrete runway has to do with having radar, but I can, I'm certainly address that. Um, for those people that don't know, you have to have, um, specific frequencies assigned to a radar. Our frequencies were assigned by the Grand Forks Air Force Base. Um, the Grand Forks Air Force Base, if they weren't interested or had a problem with our radar, they didn't have to issue us the frequencies for the radar. They did, as far as I'm concerned, um, I don't know how much more approval we can show the county commission. That the Air Force Base that doesn't have a problem with our radar, because they're the ones that gave us the approvals in the first place. Um, additionally, and something that you might find interesting, and and if you're interested, you should go to Gorman Field tomorrow. Um, or Thursday, uh, because, um, the University of North Dakota was approached by the Air Force. Um, because the Air Force was interested in doing some training exercises and, um, working encounter U A S and. Um, live virtual construction of training. So, um, tomorrow and the next day. The Air Force and the Army are running training exercises at Gorman Field using our radar. Um, and using our one vertipad and they're going to have an R, uh, the R Q four Global Hawk in the air. Um, they're going to have an N Q nine Reaper out of Fargo, run by the Happy Hooligans. And the North Dakota Army Guard will have soldiers on the ground. While the University of North Dakota is flying scan eagles in the air. And they're going to be doing research to see how much of all of those things, the Global Hawk, the, uh, and the Reaper can pick up. As well as what our radar can can identify. So, um, I I think it's great. I think that people should recognize that. The the North Dakota Army Guard, the the Happy Hooligans and the Air Force Base are all partners with us. At at Gorman Field and not one of them, as you know, we've had a ninety day moratorium and not one of them has raised their hand and said, hey. We don't think that there should be an expansion in Gorman. Frankly, they're telling us that we should be doing more. Um, I think, uh, I think, uh, I recognize also that, um, people want to, uh, wait. The eighteen months for the for the compatibility, um, study. We're already there. That that compatibility study is for future new things, new construction, new projects. We're already operating that. We already have a building. Um, Mr. Magnuson, when I put in the application. Um, he's, we wanted the hard surface. He suggested that we should add the buildings and anything that we might want in the future. We're guessing, I I don't know. What I can tell you is today, the University of North Dakota already has storage units. Sitting outside Gorman because they're doing so many projects and they have so many things that our building isn't big enough. And so we're planning for the future and would like to build another building, likely for storage. Um, but potentially for, uh, for other research projects that might come along. And who knows, if we fill that one, we might want another one, which is why we put two buildings down, one the same sizes that we have today. One half that size. It was purely a a guess at what the future might bring. What I do know is, uh, um, for the research projects and for what the University of North Dakota is looking to do. Um, a hard surface runway would certainly be a benefit to to Gorman Field. I think it would be a benefit to the ecosystem as well. Because there are other organizations in Grand Forks and around the country that would like to use a a hard surface runway, for example. Um, Ideal Aerosmith is is working on, uh, sensors that they fly off in a small unmanned aircraft, but it needs. A three hundred foot runway. So it's purely an an opportunity to provide local businesses. Options to to actually fly in our community. And I I think, I don't mean to speak for the county, but I think that's what the county's been. Preaching about that we want to be the unmanned aircraft colony for the world. Well, here's a great opportunity. Any ques- any questions?
I do have, um, Mr. Sandy, a question on the existing concrete pad that you have now. How big is that? Approximately.
Forty by forty, maybe fifty.
And that the runway exists already. It's just grass at this point, correct? Okay, and then the extension of the concrete, what are you looking at to extend that?
We're looking at fifteen hundred feet.
Okay, and the fifteen hundred feet is grass at this point, but it is still a runway. So, right now, um, if you had to, the runway exists. If there is an opportunity to, um, approve the runway concrete. And potentially wait on the buildings because they would be new. Would that work for the university aerospace program? Uh, to get that runway completed on existing, just to concrete it. And not build the buildings until after the the land use study is done, because those are new. Would that work?
No, again, um, U N D needs more indoor storage space. So, but we're using, uh. Uh, railroad containers, they're sitting outside, they're quite unsightly, but fine, we can continue to do that. That's not an issue.
Well, if it's an existing, um, runway and we're just concreting it. Um, it would make sense, and I don't know if if Mr. Magnuson would agree or not. That that could be done, but just wait for the building issues until the land use study is complete.
Yeah, I I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a problem with that. Uh, I guess that that's what the direction of the mission wants to go. I would just recommend approving the amendment to just include the runway. And that if they want to put up buildings after the study's done, then they can come back and go through the request again.
I think that would make a lot more sense. Um, I don't know who made the motion. I did. All amendment.
I'm hardly weak. I live, I don't live there. I own the farmstead, almost two miles immediately south of Gorman Field. I'm not prepared to talk today because I didn't, I was told this subject was gonna be tabled. But we we've got a lot of air traffic now. And every time we turn around, there's super birds flying over us from the east and west and. And the only place that these, uh. Drones can really take off. They can't go north because they're gonna run into airspace with the airbase. They can't go west because they're only have two miles on flight path. So they have to come south or east and east they run into the airport, Brad Fork, excuse me, Brad Forks. So it's all gets funneled down on top of us. And, uh, I'd like like to see the post moment just to give us some time to, uh, get organized and talk about it.
Where truly, do you live on that farmstead?
We have a house there. We treat it as our lake cabin. So we're out there a lot in the summertime. And there's, uh. A cluster of, uh, six homes in that area.
And we're in Fairfield Township, so we weren't part of this whole, which is the.
Well, I I know there are more people that want to be here if they're gonna vote to approve it. So I, I think at the minute we should delay this. Two weeks or whatever, because I've had people contact me that are out of state who want to read this, but they could. Number two, I don't think the buildings are issued. I think the issue. Number two, I don't think the buildings are issue, I think the issue is how much. Stuff's going to be in the air around the base, and so. I don't know, Mr. Ford, I I was saying is if you vote and we do this. And the Air Force comes back later and says, you know, I could get a mission, they should rip that runway out, then what are you going to do? So. He just better, I I think the drones are much more of an issue, I don't, to me, the buildings aren't an issue at all. It's a building, this compatibility study is not about building. Houses or sheds or something like that, this is, this has to do with interference of this, I call it the scoop stuff. ISR, so. I am concerned that I I would like to make sure if we're not going to wait. Do the wait for the compatibility study, then we better get somebody at the food chain in the military to sign off on this, that there are no issues. Because if you pave it, it's like, what's going to give more work or traffic, a gravel road or a pavement? If you pave it, there's going to be more stuff out there, it's going to happen, that's the, to business development, that's what they do. Not doing this just to keep, they want to grow. And I I'm a capitalist, I don't care, but I'm just, I just want to make sure that if we do this. At some point, whatever little something say from the base involved, or maybe it has to go higher up, and maybe they might not comment because it's not their job, but above their pay grade, but. Uh, I think we need, I think we need to maybe set a date in the future. So I know there's some citizens that are issue, and then I'd like to, Mr. Ford, do some digging and come back. He's better make sure if we do this, then. We're okay with it, and we're okay with what happens down the road.
At the next meeting.
Well, I I I I was in reasonable, I don't, it could be two weeks. No, but I'm saying, I I I that's what I'm giving Mr. Ford, it could be two weeks, it could be the, not talking eighteen months, but I. I just want to make sure that A, the citizens are notified about the meeting, and B, that the Air Force. Higher up, as in like Pentagon. They tell them, okay, whatever, you gotta say something now. This is on our plate, we're not, we're not going to wait, we're not going to wait, we need to tell them that and give them a chance to respond. Because the business is going to grow, that's what they're doing is, once again, not against it, but they're doing this to grow their business. And their business is flying drones by race.
Madam Chair, I can I can add to that, oh, I apologize, the compatible use study is current and future development. It does encompass airspace enforcement. I I had a a conversation with Mr. Sandy a while ago, phone call about about this meeting table, where the county's at, the compatible use study. Which is at the technical review committee now, as we speak. And no, we have, yeah, we did request that someone from Grand Forks Air Force Base be a liaison to the planning and zoning committee that has not been built yet. And the last time I spoke with the the previous wing commander was very shortly after Mr. Sandy and I visited. To to essentially get them to the base to make a comment on this specific request of you and the aerospace foundation. He, I was not provided one, I can say though that I had a meeting with the missions or group commander shortly after. That that planning and zoning meeting, excuse me. And, you know, the the air bases don't want to get involved in community politics. At the end of the day, and essentially the, well, no, and I said, the feedback I received was we were on the same page as the county. Or the compatible use, I think that's all you're going to get in a comment from from the base. They, their, his exact response was, we're on the same page as the county and waiting for the compatible use study, but it's not an official statement. Mr. Magnuson's correctly, still don't have someone from the base appointed as a liaison. I don't think, I don't think the board's going to get an official statement from the Air Force regarding this, in my opinion.
I know they don't comment on things like that, we need to work those things out very solid.
So. I don't know much about that. Eighteen months is all. Yeah, and that, to me, that's not even close to reasonable. I mean, even eighteen weeks raises my eyebrows. Eighteen months to me is not even fair or or good practice. For. Bunch of valued people in this community. So they need an answer. Maybe I could encourage you, Mr. Ford, put a little pressure on commander to. Get some information, because they've been, they've been pounding the pavement to get this done for an awful long time now. That we need to say yes or no. We can't just keep saying, eh, maybe, in a, in a year and a half, we'll let you know, that's not even fair. You know.
I'd agree that eighteen months seems excessive, and we can, need to continue to have this conversation, and we need to come to an answer, so they can either do it or make other. So it just.
We've got, we we.
Reasonable.
We have to shitter it off.
I mean, essentially, but in nicer terms. You're, go ahead, yeah.
The airspace out there is controlled by the Air Force Base. They can, they can ground our operations anytime they want to, with with no explanation, without any effort. All because our, the operations that happen out there have to coordinate with the Grand Forks Air Force Base. And so, I I understand, I under, I do understand. Mr. Burt, I do understand what you're saying, but the Air Force has ultimate control today, they already do, and they can ground us. And infinite them if they want to, they can just tell us, we can no longer fly regardless of what we have there, they can do it, they already can, they have that authority. Chairman, this is the commission, I'm Howard Swanson. Though several of you and Chris Ross, despite the fact that you asked me to do an hour, have PowerPoint. I do appear on behalf of the New D R S Foundation, just a couple of comments. In a former life, I did a lot of investigation and research on what authority local governments have over airspace. You have not. Providing your safety attorney with legal support for that, you control of the airspace, it's in the FAA. I appreciate Congress from the neighbors as to whether or not the flight should or shouldn't go in that direction. But that's not within your jurisdiction, in fact, you would be reversed in a court if that ever came to be. If you attempted to regulate airspace. This is Sandy's comment about the Air Force having ultimate control is also accurate, but I'll add to it. Not only does the Air Force have the authority to terminate air flight on a short term or long term basis, so does the FAA. So between those agencies or those institutions, control of the airspace is federally controlled, not locally controlled. As far as the moratorium, keep in mind that this is an existing use. It's not a new runway or an additional runway, it is an improvement to an existing runway. Moratoriums generally address unexist, nonexistent uses. Preventing a problem from developing in the construction, that's not what you have here. I don't know exactly where your compatible use study is. My understanding is you don't have a compatible use study right now, you are hoping to have one, is that inaccurate?
No, sir, that, Mr. Swanson, that's right, we put in for the application, we're waiting to hear back.
And so you don't even know if you will have a compatible use study. I would encourage you to make your decision on what is within your authority and what you do know. I did do a fair amount of research on compatible use studies for airspace around airbases, there are several out there. They inventory existing uses. Compare it to future uses. Compatible use study does not cease to impair an existing use, that would be what's called a P. And so. That's the situation here, aerospace foundation finds itself, they have existing use. They'd like to make improvements of that use. And to hold it for eighteen months for the possibility. Of a study, I don't think is is reasonable for that matter. So with that, I'll end my comments, I apologize, I don't have a PowerPoint ready. But I would encourage you to, at a minimum, approve the improvement of the of the runway form. Thank you.
I I still think there's a lot of people want to comment, and so I'm going to move to table this for two weeks.
We have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
And we're going to, I need to, for you, you had a motion to put it on a moratorium, correct? And we have a second, we need to vote on that first, right?
Or should you give it, draw the motion?
I could withdraw the motion.
Yeah, and I withdraw my second.
Yeah, good, okay.
So my motion is to table it for two weeks, and then one.
It would have to be three weeks, I believe.
Well, three weeks, eight, eight, five, and put it in front of the budget, tune up the state for that. Move it to eight, five, and we can notify the citizens out there that live out there, and then we can blow it up then.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Sandy, fair, wait, a couple of weeks.
I'm going anywhere, although concrete is cheaper today than it's ever going to be. It's actually not wrong.
Yeah.
I know.
Do you have a question for the commission as far as notification? When this went to public hearing, we notified every property over a half mile, is that the same? Thing you guys want, just just redo that?
Yeah, I would, I would with that.
You want more, just make an motion of more.
Yeah, within, you know, we're just, what, a mile and a half away, and there's probably ten houses right there, and there's. Three, right, five, six down the road, and they're constantly throwing, flying over our houses, and we have pickups parked. On the gravel roads.
That's U N D airplanes, though.
No, no, no.
There's U N D airplanes, but there's also people that are flying drones.
All the time.
Country flying drones out the corner. Whoever section they want to fly over.
Mrs. Lee, what kind of radius do you think would be reasonable to notify?
Three mile.
Three miles.
Three mile, let's go three miles.
Because we're in Fairfield, and they're doing all of their business, they're right on the border.
Oh, like Mr. Swanson said, we can't regulate the air, it's FAA, so.
Can't regulate the runway.
Exactly, so we have less drones coming over our homes all the time.
Well, currently, right, Mr. Sandy, you've been verified, like, you're doing it anyway, right, like, with or without the concrete?
We are, yeah, we, the amount of aircraft that, sorry, the amount of aircraft that can fly today doesn't change by adding a hard surface. The same, there's the same amount of airspace, there's the same amount of time in the day. So the same number of aircraft could fly tomorrow and next month and two years from now, it is what it is, but there's no harm in waiting that. Other than the time's wasting.
U N D has all kinds of money.
Motion on four to table this.
Eight, five.
Eight, five. You have a first and a second.
Put it before the budget.
And put it before the budget, uptime. All right, all those in favor of motion please say aye.
Aye.
Both, both in passing.
And I'm going to say two things that will be, Mr. Burt, you're very happy, I'm asking for. Madam Chair to sign a two-year contract for the Shelter Care Center. To charge five hundred and forty-six dollars a day per child.
Five thirty-six, the state has raised it ten dollars a day, boys, five, five forty-six, though, for for the two-year contract. It's almost a chair signature, second.
First and second, in favor of the second, all those in favor of motion please say aye.
Aye.
Both, both in passing.
Thank you.
Here's a side note, maybe for the eight, five meeting, put everything before the budget. That might be a good idea, okay, they don't need to suffer with their.
What do they want to?
If they want to, that's okay.
Madam Chair, commissioners, and just before you have the permission to advertise for the facility and opening, one of the. Players that. We selected from your previous approval, a month and a half before it didn't work out, so we pre-advertise.
I'm of approval.
Facility's manager, or now director, facilities director to refill the position we already approved.
Second. Right, first and second, in favor of discussion, all those in favor of the motion please say aye.
Aye.
Both, motion passing.
Cheers, hopefully this will also be very brief, because it's mainly an update. Earlier this year, Mr. Ford and I had been tasked with looking at adding electronic timekeeping. As a possibility for payroll, I'm here to give an update on the project of converting to electronic timekeeping. Since the project was assigned, there are some key pieces of information that have come to light. Regarding our current financial software that may impact the direction of the project. The vendor that we have, Tyler Technologies, is the current vendor for the county that provides Infinite Visions. Also called School ERP Pro, Taxwise and Document Pro. Tyler Technologies is moving Infinite Visions and Taxwise from the server to cloud. Document Pro will move in the near future, we don't have a time frame. Moving forward, Tyler Technologies will only provide new functions to cloud-based clients. The server clients, which is what we currently are, will only be provided bug fixes. And any mandatory software updates to keep us compliant. At some point in the future, and they haven't told us when. I would anticipate it will be sooner rather than later, based on many years working in the software industry. That they will stop supporting the client-based version. Working with Tyler Technologies, my research has shown that the functionality that we would need. To effectively put in the electronic timekeeping. Would, to meet our needs, would be moving to the cloud-based format. Adding the HR module and the electronic timekeeping is one option. That conversion will be two steps, one, move Tyler or move Infinite Visions and Taxwise to the cloud. That would take about two to three months. Step two would be add the HR module and electronic timekeeping. This step would take approximately six to nine months, first step would need to be complete before we can start the second. The second option is the commission could say, no, we're going to stay with the server-based option right now. And knowing that. We won't have the functionality, it'll be limited, and the support options would be less robust than for the cloud-based format. When Tyler Technologies decides to stop supporting the server base. Then we would be either required to move to the cloud base or seek different programs to replace all these pieces. The conversion, if we stayed with the server right now and we wish to continue with timekeeping. We would need to add the electronic timekeeping, minimum of a six to nine months, and these are only estimates, it could. If there's a data problem. Yeah, it could take a long time, the other option is to just stay where we are now.
So. For somebody, and I'm not going to name any names, but let's just say, for instance, Commissioner Rusta. That can barely send off a text message, none of that makes any sense to me whatsoever, what is your recommendation?
So, at this point, my request is. I'm looking for directions, do you want me to to continue to explore and get more detail? I think some various, these are very high-level estimates of potential costs right now. Do you want me to continue looking into the timekeeping program? Do you want me to continue working with the appropriate parties to explore moving to the cloud base? Which is kind of the future. Or we want to keep it up the status quo right now, continue. continue to do everything like we are right now, until we know kind of what our budget's gonna look like, what the cap is gonna look like, I just need to know.
Yeah, I would definitely.
We need, we need the same money.
Well, I got a lot of questions on this, uh. Uh, first of all, uh, when you said higher level, does that mean you think these numbers are high?
No, this is just when I've been working with them, they they were able to just give me, these are ballpark estimates.
Is there, is there, is there a reason we don't put this out for bid? There's a million payroll companies in the world.
Not a million that will work with our finance software.
Okay, well, then, maybe we need to look at, I'm just saying.
Right.
There. I mean, Leroy's basically doing time cards right now, almost, right?
It's not gonna free up a lot of Leroy's time, just.
Well, I'll get to that, uh. There aren't a whole lot of people left doing the way, I just, I don't, we, we can't put it out for bid. And if we don't like to bid, you know what we do? We reject them. So sho- shouldn't we, wh- what do, what do the, what do, what is every city and county in the state with two hundred or more employees? Are they on this guy, or they are, there's a vast array of things.
There's a vast array, not everyone uses Tyler Technologies for their basic, for their finance. As Ms. Morsted and I have had conversations, payrolls just one piece of our whole financial package. So, it's one piece, and when we're looking at electronic timekeeping, I went through numerous vendors with the criteria that we knew what functionality we needed, and it circled back to, yep, and we can't do that. Yep, and I'm sorry, we can't do that, so that's where we ended up with.
Hey, could we write up a proposal for a bid? And put that out there and see what's out there?
And Chair, Commissioner Birkey, um, you can put out a bid, the fast answer is yes, the, the problem is we, it goes, goes back to what the commission wants to do with the old YAP, is what's gonna work, what's not gonna work, what are we gonna put out in the bid? Because what do we want to see? Uh, when I sat down, started having this conversation with Ms. Steel, there was a plethora of vendors we could choose from. The issue is well-stated by Ms. Steel, but we have, whatever goes in for timekeeping has to work with everything that Ms. Morsted and her department uses for assessments for budgets, uh, it has to also be able to talk to, are we compatible with Ms. Guditis's department and software she uses for their assessments each year? So if we put out to bid, uh, I'll, I'll just caution the commission, we can, however, we, we're gonna get a lot of questions from vendors before they even submit a bid, because they need to know what we're using for property tax software, they, we, they need to know what we're using for tax assessment software. They all talk to each other, that's how we wound up paring down to the options you're seeing. So they, they're, they all have to be compatible with each other, so.
So all these people in the world, the business world, that don't have all these assessing and all this stuff, they have a time system on electronic, how, how, how can they make it work?
Because they don't have the compatibility, or they don't need the compatibility.
Well, does it have to interact, why, why does the time clock have, why does the time clock have to interact with assessing?
It, it all has to do with numbers, sir, it all comes down to debit credit, i- if I'm putting it very plainly. So if we're entering any kind of numbers, assessed values, and, uh, if we're doing payroll benefits, it's all numbers, it all goes through the same system, uh, the system that you and I have talked about, Commissioner Birkey, a few times. So they have to be able to talk to each other, it, it's like, uh, getting our own computer system and trying to get hardware, software that will, yes. Great analogy, Mac and, and Apple, so, yeah, I was, I was kind of of the same impression, Commissioner Birkey, is let's, we can find cheap as best. But as I've learned more and more about this, they have to be compatible with the other departments, because they're all talking to each other in their systems.
A lot of private industry, Mr. Birkey, outsources their payroll.
Well, that's what I'm talking about, I, I'm talking about outsourcing the payroll, outsourcing the taxes, all that stuff, let them do it. That's what these payroll companies do, maybe I'm missing something here, that's what I thought we were gonna go down to, is, I, I know a company just changed over, they, they don't do, they don't do taxes anymore. They don't do quarterly reports, they don't do, they don't do deposits, businesses, they don't do the deposits, they don't do
Right.
the quarterly reports, they don't do W Tuesday, all that's gone, because the company they hired does it. Uh, I, I guess maybe I'm missing some, we can't get a.
Government and people into the private industry, is that different?
Yeah, yeah, there, there's a lot of. There's, there's a lot of different regulations and, and pieces, and I don't know what it would take to be able, if you were gonna consider outsourcing something to someone else, I.
We can't outsource. We can't outsource tax assessing, we can't outsource.
I'm talking about assessing, I'm talking, when, when you, when you do payroll, you pay taxes to the feds, they do all that.
If, if, yes, Madam Chair, Commissioner Birkey, if the commission wants us to explore just contracting payroll only, we, we can certainly do that, we're, Ms. Steel just, and I talked, and I said, this is the time to bring you guys an update as board, because you're talking budgets, and you see there's a, there is.
Well, that, that, I guess when I brought this up to you, that's what I thought we were discussing, is, is looking at doing difference with how we do payroll, not assessing, not this, not that, just the payroll part of it.
But I think what Ms. Steel's saying is that it's intertwined together, like, if you take that piece out, all this other stuff unravels, and then you're gonna change everything else, because that one piece has to fit in there with everything.
So if we quit supporting this thing, blows up, what are we gonna do with that? Yeah, I would tell.
But I mean, I don't, I, I'm not totally against, what does it look like to outsource payroll, I'm not against that at all. I just don't wanna unravel all this other stuff and can then have to continue to buy things.
Right, and if we are, if we wanna look at the potential of outsourcing payroll, then we need to sit down and work on what exactly does that look like, because even if you outsource, if we, I'm gonna pick a vendor name, if we outsource the A D P, that doesn't eliminate our burden of getting the time, getting everything, getting it, it all has to be able to be sent to them. And that's not necessarily the easiest thing with the software that they have, and we are not, we are in the majority of counties have some version of Tyler Technologies. Even the city has some version of Tyler Technologies.
Um, one of the things we have to recognize too is that budgetary, budget-wise, you're talking seventy-five percent of our budget goes to staff, so that's pretty significant. They're not gonna do it for free, they're gonna do it with a code, uh, service fee, or a service charge, or whatever. That's how they make their money, so then that's an additional charge, but that doesn't make the role of H R any less. Because it shouldn't, it doesn't.
You don't do taxes, what are you doing?
It doesn't work that way.
Okay.
And we're, we're going be, we're going back to the A S four hundred. And the A S four hundred, when we moved up from the A S four hundred, had to have something compatible. That's how it works, it's kinda like when you started with Windows, whatever, and then you went the next version, and the next version, what are we at, ten now? That's how it works. You can't take, well, we're gonna take Windows and throw it out the window and start something, you can't do it, it doesn't work that way. And from an accounting standpoint, I understand this, we do this at our sys, at our agency all the time. We just switched to a new, uh, software program for, um, handling our payroll, and it costs a lot of money. And do we have that money? No, did we have to figure out how we're gonna pay for it? Yes, is it online? Yes. It's not that bad, but it takes a lot of work, and it doesn't matter, outsourcing costs money. Just like contracts cost money, that's an additional payment, you're not cutting staff anywhere. Not Leroy, well, if they wanna get paid, seventy-five percent of our budget goes to.
People just punching on the phone in the, in the private sector.
That's the private sector, you're not in the private sector, you're in government.
Yeah, I know, we gotta do things worse than, oh my god.
So, my suggestion would be to continue looking at what it costs to go to the cloud, what the additional expenses are, it probably would be cheaper than trying to find an entirely new system. That doesn't even include the staff time writing the R F P, getting the qualifications put together, that isn't, uh, our job. That's a long job.
Make a motion, do four votes.
Well, it's not a vote at this point, I'm just suggesting that you continue to look at the cloud and see what costs we're gonna be dealing with.
I mean, because at some point, we're gonna be forced to do it. It is, it's gonna hap, it's gonna happen, sorry, we don't support your system anymore.
Whether it's this year, whether it's two or three years, I don't know, for sure. I just didn't want to invest more time with everything else going on without knowing what the direction.
And I sympathize with Terry, I completely agree with him, my cousin is in a banking industry with this kind of stuff, and I have learned so much about just a slight tweak in technology, the whole thing is done. I don't understand it all, but I, I don't want it to be more expensive, but I do think that we need to figure out at some point how to pay for this, and whether that's budgeting a portion of this, this year, over the next two years, whatever that may be. We don't know when they're gonna be, you know, not surfacing our software anymore, so, um, we just need to continue this.
Is there a particular reason why we couldn't have our payroll independent of the rest of our internet capabilities, or whatever? Or where, maybe, we would just not have to talk with, for instance, finance and things like that.
Well, we still would have to export everything out of there, and import it into our accounting software, so that the league would be able to budget, know what the costs are, cost out.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And that's the same thing, if we were to look at outsourcing to another vendor, let's say that's the option we went with, they would need to be able to provide the, we have to be able to provide the information to them, them to write the checks, for them to type, to pay the taxes, for them to do those pieces. And then they have to be able to give us the information, so that it can go into the finance software.
When it comes to computers, you have to communicate with me and cry out.
I was just gonna say that. Drumming.
I just don't have, I, I don't speak that language.
And my, my experience before coming here, I spent almost twenty years in tech support and software, so.
I appreciate your.
Yep, that's why I'm trying to, to just get ahead of it right now.
I've been sitting three hours, and I'm a politician.
Hear it.
But I, uh, Madam Chair, I thought that the time card thing, weren't we looking for something to track our time, to send to like a manager payroll, so they could just have it all in one place, we're not, we fill, we fill a stuff on a computer, and it's verified to somebody in our office, then it's sent to payroll, then they verify it, and they enter it. Aren't we looking for like a program, like an app on a phone or something, we pay for? And then I could go to Leroy or whoever, and Leroy could enter it and get us paid.
That's what I said.
Yeah, that's, that's the way.
Well.
Well, of course, because the company does it.
Because we've been looking into it as a sheriff's office for a long week, we're still using the paper sheets. But we're looking for a different way to track our time.
Yeah, some sort of.
Our deputy's time to check on duty, already tracks three different ways, right, our GPS, paper sheet, and they have a bunch of the system. But something else, you can just hit, I'm on duty, I'm off duty, and you can log what kind of shift you're on. And then that would go to a manager, that would approve it, and then it gets sent to payroll. And I do understand, I'll, I'll give a cherry version if I can with visions. So we use that, we track that, so, somebody gets paid today, you pay today, it updates, it communicates immediately, and adjusts your overall budget. So the budget is live, if I go out and buy two ladders, because we have twenty-foot ceilings on our new office, I buy two ladders, that receipt gets entered, my budget updates with how much money I have. Uh, somebody takes, somebody uses some of their, uh, uh, money for H R A or whatever, it calculates, like, all of this automatically calculates, that's what Infinite Visions communicates with everything. So I thought, like, we couldn't switch a payroll system, but we could switch a time tracking system. That's why, and, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm, maybe it's the same thing.
Because the, the piece that's missing is, if you just, let's say we went and bought time clocks. Use that as an example. When Matt Kind Fox puts time clocks in every office, they export the time, the punches, right? Hey, if that time clock does not talk to payroll, then you have, we'll use Leroy, because he's the person currently in that seat, you have Leroy needing to enter into payroll the punch for how many hours St. Kimberly worked, how many hours Sid Mark worked, how many hours the Bob worked. And so it's more than just that.
I'm not overly comfortable bringing somebody up over and over again that isn't here to speak on behalf, if you don't mind. So, and we maybe bring this up a little bit. Is like, you know, we're kinda talking about what this individual does, but he's not here to.
He, he's fully aware, so, yeah.
This, it doesn't so well with me, but.
Okay, so we, I do change out to, and this is the payroll person, you know, the position. But, I mean, there's, there's tracking time, there's entering time, and there's being able to pace them. So all those pieces, and what, and what we're trying to do is track the time, stop having to manually enter the time, so we could pace it. So it would be more accurate and, um, more timely.
Well, I think, I'm just on an unrelated payroll note, are we gonna end this pay-forward thing you talked about when I talked to you one time? Where they're getting paid in advance, we gonna end that?
That's part of, if we make a change to the system, we would need to stop paying first.
Okay, so you're, you're also doing that too, just, you know, you're paying people before they even work, so.
I believe we're gonna table the twenty twenty-six preliminary budget.
It's the date?
November sixteen, twenty twenty-five, that's the beginning.
I have a question, so we're not gonna talk about the budget to the night we vote on it?
No, 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 this is the final budget.
I know, but you said, so you said about table.
No, no, we wanna, we wanna table talking about the budget until next week, that's what I, I'm just getting the motion out of the way.
Are we having a separate meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so whenever it's meeting next week?
Yes, it's not the budget in three months.
Is Mr. Ford gonna be there, since he's gonna be out of town the whole week, for the five days?
Uh, Commissioner Birkey, uh, Madam Chair, I will be in. I believe that the dates were the July twenty-first, and then they went to the twenty-eighth, but to your question, sir, uh, I will be here Monday, and then I get on a plane Tuesday afternoon.
Maybe the twenty-first is the date that I was.
Okay, so she's gone the rest of the week, I don't hear your schedule.
More time.
There, I'm that force everybody, I'm chilling afternoon, that's for me, but hoping to, I can do whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, so the twenty-first, should we say, three o'clock?
We might as well make it earlier, because it might go all day.
You're, you're right, you're right, we might have a four-hour.
Okay, so, Monday, the twenty-first, at one o'clock?
Yep.
Here?
I'll see if the, I'll see if that conference room is available, and then we can do more, the commission can do it like a round table, instead of sitting here, if that's all right.
Still have a motion on the floor to set the final budget hearing.
We got a motion of second, right?
Yep, do you have any other comments?
No, no, I'm ready to go.
Uh, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners, I will be as brief as possible, I have a number of items for decisions, and I'm gonna also ask State Street Moms, Ms. Leonda, to present a couple. First is Project Ultra, um, I need the, the board's approval and Chair's signature to amend to I I Qs or indefinite delivery, indefinite quality contract, regions. contract. Reason being is the county deobligated some money and we're getting some money back for Project Ultra. And so there are two different IDIQs, um, that, that need to be adjusted to reflect that, so. Thank you. Second?
I just have one question on that. On page one forty-three and one forty-nine of our documents, the contact person is Mr. Ross, nothing about him, but wouldn't be better if I had a staff person because we come and go and they're here for much longer. Uh, I, I gotta see, this, it's, maybe it's not an issue, but, uh, do, do you want them calling you every time they have a question about an escrow agent? I mean, I, I guess I'm just wondering if it'd be better for Mr. Ford or Miss Leane to be on that. Uh, it's, it's not, it's not really doing issues. It's, it's a, uh, it's a staff work thing, type of thing.
That, that's a different item. That's the escrow contract. I'm, I, I'm sorry. I'm talking about the Project Ultra, um, contract with the, with the Office of the Secretary of Defense. We'll get to the escrow agreement too. But so on this one, this is where the county deobligated some funding back to the Navy. The Navy didn't spend it all, so we're getting hundred and forty-eight thousand back for Project Ultra. But being the contract has to be modified to reflect that, it needs chair signature.
That was an option. Okay, I'm sorry, I read that one.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Thank you. Uh, next item, uh, lease extensions of Northeast Human Services. Um, they're just extensions of existing leases, so, um, nineteen parking spaces will be leased from Northeast Human Services. This is, of course, these two are over two years, four five years. Um, and that will bring in thirty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars annually for two years for the county. And then other contract for lease extension is for the thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six square feet that Northeast Human Services leases on fourth and fifth floor. And that's five hundred and forty-one thousand, forty-four dollars annually for two years. So I need, um, I'm requesting board's approval of both extensions and chairs.
Second, lease extension with the chair. Person that's like, can you do any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Madam Chair, if it's okay with you, I'd like to table the IT upgrades. Okay, next is the, is the escrow agreement. I'm gonna, uh, ask Ms. Leonda quickly speak to that.
Same, I should be here. I recorded nor by that I have to correct substantial conflict interest on this item agenda. And I am, I would ask for a motion allowing spite by conflict interests.
So.
Second.
Chair, hey, again, members of the commission, this is really just housekeeping. Uh, so this it's actually, Commissioner Mirkey, this is exactly what you were proposing. So on the county's escrow agreement with Alair's Financial, um, for, it's essentially the site development lease between the US Air Force and the Grand Forks County requires that we utilize escrow account. Um, and it's in your pockets to receive a red payment to Grand Forks Air Force Base with the US Air Force paid participation rent, participation rent and or base rent, which required by the site development lease, been in place since twenty sixteen. This is just changing the, um, POC on that document. Um, as Commissioner Mirkey said, to represent, um, staff, so you don't have to come back and make these changes every time. So we're just asking for chair's signature to change the point of contacts from what it previously was, three individuals who no longer with the county. Former Commissioner Tom Falk, former State's Attorney David Jones, and then former Finance and Tax Auditor, um, Debbie Nelson to instead, the point of contacts would be, um, Finance and Tax Auditor Moorestead and Z three onestead, County Minister, and Minister Ford, and then myself.
Next item is the public speaking policy, and I'm actually going to defer to Ms. Womsted on that update.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. We have a chair member to the board. Uh, if you recall, this board enacted a citizen comment policy back in February of this year. Uh, since that date, the North Dakota Legislature passed a bill, um, on, on the same subject, but with some different provisions, which was Senate Bill twenty-one eighty. Um, this bill goes into effect on August first. So I have drafted an update to the policy that was previously approved back in February, um, in order to, um, be in compliance with, uh, the updated North Dakota law. In short, this law requires us to have each individual to provide their name and address, uh, to the governing body prior to their citizen comment. So, um, this provision was added by utilizing speaker cards like some of the other government agencies already do. Um, this, uh, law also requires that the comments must address an agenda item identified on the speaker card, be pertinent to Grand Forks County, um, and be directed as, to the board as a whole, um. The, uh, other provisions of the policy, including the five-minute time limit, remain in this policy. The decorum guidelines also remain. Um, and then, uh, the only other change is under the roles, uh, a little bit different procedure than what our, uh, prior policy required. Essentially, the chair, um, would call upon any member of the public that has submitted a speaker card prior to the commencement of the meeting. So citizens would have to submit that before the meeting begins in order to have an opportunity. So unless, I certainly can answer any questions, but, um, we need a motion to approve this updated policy if it was acceptable.
So what you're saying is then if they don't turn the card in before the call to order, they can't talk. Is that correct? So that's what I mean, no, is thanks to the state, they're screwing us up and are making us less open to the public.
Yeah.
It's a state law. Yes. So I, I'm, I, I'd like to propose, when I get out, fill this out to you guys and see what you think. Uh, at four o'clock, the chair gives the two-minute warning and states that the meeting will be called to order at four oh two. If you want to talk to any agenda item, you must come up right now and fill out the card. Because if you don't fill out the card, you're not going to be allowed to talk. And say that at four o'clock. And then if, that'd be, well, I, I doubt we're going to call the two-minute warning, but, uh, citizens' comments notice or whatever you want to put. And then at four oh two, you would then call the meeting to order, but that gives them time to come up and fill their cards out. Uh, because we're just not going to, they used to be able to have comments and now the state's taking away from them. So I, I think we want to make sure we give, hopefully they don't get caught by train, they're all here on time. But I do think we need to give that two-minute warning out before we call the order. So, because that's with their time, know their name, their address, and the agenda item. So Mr. Ford, you have to have cards over there and you'll have to have an agenda over there in case they're not sure. And we get them filled out, so we let, still let people talk. But once again, for the record, the statement of worse.
Reminding the sponsor that these comment cards need to be returned to myself or whoever the chair is or.
But he can get them and pass them down to you or whatever.
And that's what I'm saying, like, obviously. I just want to make sure that they know, like, who to give them to.
So I just, you can tell, it's not a way to make a motion, but I, I, I really want us to make sure we give people a warning. Because they're not going to, they're not going to know, they're not going to know. And it's changing next meeting. Because it's after the first August, so the state law takes effect. So if this is an issue, I, I would move approval of the, this new policy. Uh, with the exception that we, uh, on our agenda, we, at four o'clock, we put citizen comment notice or, if that's a good enough phrase.
Important policies that we need to, the chair needs to notify whoever's in the audience that they have two minutes or whatever, if you haven't done it yet, we've got two minutes to.
Madam Chair, members of the board, yes, we could add that to the policy. I would recommend maybe we don't have specific for a clock and four oh two, because some of your meetings, like next week, might be at one o'clock. So we could put in here, um, two minutes prior to the start of the meeting. So like next Monday, it would be twelve fifty-eight, that the call would be made cautioning.
Except my motion to prove that with, with, as she can write the language up to, I give you two-minute warning.
Okay, I would second that motion. Then I do have a question. Uh, what about citizens that may be online and want to make a comment? Usually it's somebody on the agenda or one of us, but what if, eh, there's a citizen that can't get here because of mobility, whatever the case may be, and they're online and they would like to make some, uh, comment during the public comments such as.
I mean, we don't have a ton of people, but maybe we can them a heads up and Mr. Ford or somebody fills it out on their behalf. I mean, just to be accessible. I think that's fair.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I think that is a fair point. Um, the state law just requires that it be submitted in writing. Um, so maybe we could amend the language, um, so that a citizen on Zoom could submit an email request and so long as it's here, you know, the meeting start time, we'd have to have specific email, which would be the goal to me.
Yeah, uh, Chair Hagan, I think by nature of the way that we're doing the Zoom now, where, um, those who wish to attend and speak during the meeting have to request a Zoom link. Because otherwise they're just watching through YouTube. I think that that would be just handled through, um, sending them the Zoom link originally, so that they're getting access to the meeting. And so we certainly could say, um, we could put something in there, but I think that that will resolve itself, just given how we are now ready for Zoom.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Last item is, um, Mr. Lombardi, Veterans, I couldn't be here today. Um, but he is asking for board approval and chair signature on a memorandum of understanding to the county and pilot technology. Um, it's renewing the MOU and it's, it's the system that the Veteran Service Office uses uh, to assist veterans with their claim. So, um, that's fourteen, uh, one thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and Mr. Lombardi watches for it every year. But need, need the system. Oh, I have?
Great. Do you have any additional?
The Fair Board met, as usual, we had some rain on Wednesdays, rain on Friday, cloudy on Sunday. Overall, they had a good, they had a good fair. But the weather did put a little damp on it. I also, uh, I want to, for Mr. Ford, I am requesting that, uh, you put this on the agenda for the fifth. Uh, I would like a discussion of a committee being formed of Mr. Ford, Ms. Womston and a commission member. We should figure out how we want to do that. To form a negotiating committee to buy the sheriff's office now. If he was the builder of the sheriff's office and enter negotiations, see if we can buy the building now and not wait five years. See what the price is. Also, when you do that, I, I know they're buying all the bills are paid, but as you go through that, I'd also like to give what we paid so far, just so we know the total cost. But I want any negotiations now because, uh, I'd say, like, so we'll see if he's willing to sell or not. If not, we have to wait five years. So, okay, if we have beef with that, or. So if we do that next meeting, appreciate it. Thanks. That's all I have. Thank you.
The Human Service Zone Board Met today, um, they've been very busy. Uh, some employees leaving, whether it be retirement or moving on to different employment. And so they've been doing lots of hiring, but it's going well. Um, right now there are one hundred and eleven open child protection cases, which is good because it's usually around two hundred. Um, they have dandelion awards for performance across the county. They award ten of them. Five of them came, went to Grand Forks County Human Service. So that's exciting. And, um, right now we have uh, about seven hundred and twenty-one families that are receiving child care assistance. One thousand, four hundred and eighty-one households receiving energy assistance. And I believe Tannic was a hundred and fifty-two households. Right now they're on a performance improvement plan, um, with the federal government, the whole state is. And so they're continuing to monitor improvements of, um, of X, uh, accuracy and timeliness of getting applications submitted and and so they're very busy doing that. Also, on Wednesday tomorrow, I have the library board. That's it.
I'm good.
Uh, Thursday, I've got Airport Authority Board. I just want to say one thing. I want to thank all my counterparts, everyone at this table and everyone that might watch this meeting in the future for the amazing support and outcry that I've gotten once I got that crappy news about my wife's cancer. And so I just want to say thanks to everybody. That's, that sucks. And this is my soapbox to stand up. So I'm standing. That's all I have.
Um, I have a few budget meetings and this week is a little bit easier. We've got Regional Board Council tomorrow. And, uh, rest of the week will be background sky, business after hours and some media events for Project Alpha. Um, I'm in business. The Grand Sky Envoy and then the twenty twenty-five bucket appointment. We, uh, oh, to make a motion to.
Just to be clear, um, the North Dakota Fire Department stayed on the record, the basis for.
So I'm gonna say ditto from everything I just said earlier. I work with Grand Sky and I have a substantial conflict interest on this item or board. And so I would ask for a motion allowing Fisher Hagan to tell me not to vote on this. And Terry Beard is seconded.
All right, we have a second, correct? This is second, all of the favor of motion, please say aye. One, dressed it. Uh, the delegate appointment.
And, sure. I would move that Ms. Morrison be our delegate for the NBA CO Conference.
All right, correspondence. And the Bill twenty twenty-seven Community Responsibilities.
I don't.
It looks to me that'd be something for emergency management. And I'd like to refer that, Mr. Ford, he could refer that document and that issue to her and have her work on that and bring it back to his commission, with whatever we need to do with it.
I did share with, okay, Mr. West, Mr. Mangasim, and Ms. Gels, I have chatted with, with Ms. Gels and. We're on that, sir.
One last thing. Oh, I, um, just want to make a comment that when, uh, Carice does the situation reports on a daily basis, they're much appreciated. And so I think we need to acknowledge her for including that on a daily basis to county staff. I think it's very beneficial.
Move the German. Second?